Is it just internal or is it the Shaw system as well?
We're good now.
We're good now?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Lethbridge City Council meeting for Tuesday, August the 10th, 2021. I'm going to begin with the acknowledgement statement. Is there somebody online? Okay. Okay. The City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we are gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains, and pays respect to the Blackfoot people past, present, and future, while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta, Region Three. We'll now move on to bouquets. Start with Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Thank you, your worship. You know, just a simple one, congratulations to all of the athletes from Canada who participated in the Tokyo Olympics, bringing home 24 medals, the most they've ever had in the non- boycotted Games. That's amazing. We had a number of local athletes who were involved. So just great congratulations, some wonderful moments that will be an inspiration to a lot of young kids in the city moving forward with their lives. So just kind of a cool, a cool, a cool thing to watch. Thank you.
Thank you. Great Olympics to wake up to. Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Just once again, a shout out to New West Theatre and all the volunteers and participants for the Arts in the Parks series. It's been going great. Last week at Legacy Park was amazing. I believe this upcoming weekend is at Civic Park. Just trying to get confirmation, yes. Civic Centre Park, lots of great acts. I think if anyone was missing live theatre, I believe New West is actually performing one of their shows at Civic Park this weekend. So try and get out and enjoy that. But thanks for all the participants and the organizers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kaufman?
Nothing, Mayor Spearman.
Councillor Morrow?
Nothing, thanks.
Councillor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I just want to give a huge congratulations to Close and everyone involved with the Lethbridge Solar System model. I know people are seeing the planets pop up around Lethbridge and all the way out to Park Lake. The signage is going up. So I know this was years in the making and everyone behind it, congratulations and keep an eye out for it. We had to find the planets. I know ours is at the Gault Museum and Archives and there's one at the university and hopefully people can go and discover them.
You. Councillor Higgin?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Just a huge shout out to all of the live music, et cetera, that is going on around town, as well as Ribfest coming up this weekend, seeing people getting out and socializing it together. It's been great to see the smiles on people's faces. So just again, Ribfest this weekend and anybody who's ever been to one would probably want to go again. So shout out to them.
You. Councillor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Hawkins, the Parks team and all that. Over the last few weeks, I know there's been numerous complaints or concerns in regards to weeds throughout the community and I know you have a limited budget, but I've had the opportunity to host a few community meetings with some neighborhoods in regard to some of the issues and I'm glad that you guys were able to address a lot of their issues and I just wanted to say a huge thank you. It's great. I know you have a limited resources and I appreciate all the answers and all the questions, answers to all the questions that I've been sending to you and I've been, of course, passing those on. But thank you to your team for what you guys have done.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. To you and your team. It's been a challenging year. Thank you. I have a couple of bouquets. I'd like to offer a bouquet to Mr. Kelly, Mr. Michael Kelly. He's retiring this month. Mr. Kelly has had an incredible 21 years at the career at the City of Lethbridge and started in 2000 as our purchasing manager before moving to real estate and land development in 2006. So this role has provided numerous opportunities to be a community builder focusing on big picture ideas and then finding ways to make those ideas become reality by solving problems, negotiating solutions, and facilitating partnerships. Some highlights of Mr. Kelly's career involve overseeing the development of residential subdivisions such as Riverstone, The Crossings, and Watermark, as well as major commercial and industrial developments in the sharing business and industrial park. Notably, the negotiation of 286 acres of industrial land sale to Cavendish Farms, which was instrumental in an unprecedented $480 million investment by the company in Lethbridge. Leveraging federal and provincial funding to create more than 650 affordable housing rental units over a five-year period from 2007 to 2011, and negotiating the acquisition of Lethbridge Airport from Lethbridge County and executing the transition of airport operations to the City of Lethbridge, a catalytic project which should benefit our city for years to come. And leveraging the $2 million of municipal investment in the Lethbridge Airport to secure a total of $26 million in provincial and federal grant funding to address much-needed infrastructure upgrades at the airport. So all of that is coming to conclusion. So I'd like to thank Mr. Kelly for his considerable efforts on behalf of the City of Lethbridge and our citizens in significant projects over the last 20 years. Thank you. I'd also like to speak about the passing of one of Southern Alberta's greatest businessmen, community builder, and philanthropists. And we've all heard the sad news about Mr. Core Van Rae. Mr. Van Rae immigrated to Canada from Holland in the late 1950s and brought with him an expertise and drive for farming and agriculture. He was a family man with six children and 11 grandchildren and he and his wife Christine built a vastly successful farming business both here in Southern Alberta and later, in later years, in Saskatchewan. His passion for farming, education, and fitness spurred on several philanthropic ventures, including a $5 million donation to the University of Lethbridge and Lethbridge College for their agricultural programs, along with a $4 million donation, or $3.75 million donation, to the new YMCA, which is now known as the Core Van Rae YMCA. Mr. Van Rae never had it easy. And those of you who are aware of the beef issue that we had back in 2005 in Canada, where nobody was buying Canadian beef, Mr. Van Rae survived through all of that. He survived through integrity and leadership. He never gave up and he built a successful business. He showed pride in Southern Alberta and ensured that many in our city had access to resources and opportunities that perhaps they may not have had if it were not for his generosity. His considerable support of community charities and access for those in need was amazing. He was an amazing business leader, a community builder, and a Southern Albertan, and we will very much miss Core and we send our condolences to his family and his loved ones. Thank you, Mr. Van Rae. We are sorry to see your passing. And with that, we'll move on with the agenda for today. I have a resolution from Deputy Mayor Campbell, Consent Agenda. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of City Council held on Tuesday, July 27th, be approved and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign the same. And further be it resolved that the minutes of the public hearing held on Tuesday, July 27th, 2021, be approved and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign the same. And further be it resolved that City Council receive for information the status of directed resolutions for August 10th, 2021 with the following amendment. That the date of return for Bylaw 6291, a bylaw to repeal Bylaw 6129 and remove the designation of the Bentley Block as a municipal historic resource, be deferred from August 10th, 2021 to a future meeting of City Council. And further be it resolved that City Council provide first reading to the following bylaws. Bylaw 6288, Land Use Amendment Re. 4403 and 4505, 24th Avenue South. Bylaw 6292, Land Use Bylaw Amendment Re. Childcare Definitions. Bylaw 6293, Land Use Amendment Re. Signs and Murals. Bylaw 6295, Land Use Bylaw Amendment Re. Minor Errors. Bylaw 6303, Land Use Amendment Re. 3401, 26th Avenue North. Bylaw 6304, Land Use Bylaw Amendment Re. 539, 18th Street South. Bylaw 6305, Land Use Bylaw Amendment Re. 520, 18th Street South. Bylaw 6306, A Bylaw to Borrow for the Waste and Recycling Centre Disposal, Sell, Development, and Closure. Bylaw 6307, A Bylaw to Borrow for Waste and Recycling Centre Landfill, Gas, and Litate. That's right, that's Litate Management. Bylaw 6308, A Bylaw to Borrow for Waste and Recycling Centre Enhancements. Bylaw 6309, A Bylaw to Borrow for Sustainability Enhancements. Bylaw 6310, A Bylaw to Borrow for the Water Treatment Plant Medium Voltage Upgrades. Bylaw 6311, A Bylaw to Borrow for the Uplands Reservoir Upgrades. Bylaw 6312, A Bylaw to Borrow for the Waste Water Treatment Plant Biosolids Treatment Upgrade. Bylaw 6313, A Bylaw to Borrow for the Waste Water Treatment Plant Electrical Upgrades. Bylaw 6314, A Bylaw to Borrow for the Waste Water Treatment Plant Bioreactor Aeration Blowers Upgrade. Bylaw 6315, A Bylaw to Borrow for the Waste Water Treatment Plant UV Disinfection Upgrades. Bylaw 6316, A Bylaw to Borrow for the Distribution Extension and Improvement Annual Program. Bylaw 6317, A Bylaw to Borrow for the North scenic Drive Uplands Boulevard to 44th Avenue, Stage One. Bylaw 6318, A Bylaw to Borrow for the Walsh Drive, University Drive to Métis Trail. Bylaw 6319, A Bylaw to Borrow for the West Siphon Screen Relocation. Bylaw 6320, Repealing Bylaws 5712, 5847, and 6078. And Bylaw 6321, Amendment to Bylaw 5378, The Sharing Business and Industrial Area Structure Plan. Bylaw 6322, Amendment to Bylaw 5801, Due to Organizational Restructure. Further be it resolved that City Council direct that a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, September 7th, at 4:00 PM for the following bylaws. Bylaw 6288, Bylaw 6292, Bylaw 6293, Bylaw 6295, Bylaw 6303, Bylaw 6304, Bylaw 6305, and Bylaw 6321. Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Thank you, your worship. As you may notice, there were a lot of bylaws here. That's just the usual procedure for bylaws. This is a first reading. If there are any questions, I'll open it up to my colleagues.
Councillor Higgin?
Hey, actually more for debate, so I'll wait.
Okay. Any further questions? I see none. We'll move on to debate. Councillor Higgin?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I'm just, I'm looking at these 27 items that we have on the consent agenda and the consent agenda, as we mentioned before, gets bigger and bigger and bigger each time. I understand that a lot of these are just customary and they're, they move through. But what concerns me is we've had this for about a week and we see bylaws to borrow, bylaws to borrow, bylaws to borrow, bylaws to borrow. Majority of them are bylaw to borrow. I don't know if anybody else has and thank you if you have had the opportunity to really dig deep into every single one of these. I know I haven't. And so for that reason, I need more time on this and so I will not be supporting the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Carlson?
Thanks, Mayor Spearman. Are we allowed to ask questions at this point? Maybe to help clear up some of the previous question or thought? Because I believe these are flowing out of the operating budget and capital budget for borrowings. Is that correct?
Mr. Matthews?
Your worship, to Councillor Carlson. That is correct. These are flowing out of the 2022 to 2031 CIP. They're the approved capital projects that council approved earlier this year.
Thank you. So we did approve these projects. We're just getting the borrowing bylaws in place to make sure they can happen, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Matthews, is this the normal procedure that we would follow following a capital budget and an operating budget revision?
Normally, we would come with all the borrowing bylaws in one, one meeting. We typically would like to have these at the same time as the approvals going through, just timeframes. We weren't able to do that during that period. So we've brought them at this council meeting instead of the council meeting where the CIP was approved.
Thank you. Okay, any further debate? I see none. Councillor, Deputy Mayor Campbell?
As I pointed out, this is just normal procedure. These have been approved already in the capital process and I'll just call for the vote.
Okay, question has been called. All in favor? Any opposed?
Yes, Joe.
Okay, so councillors Higgin and Morrow are opposed. Okay, okay, thank you. One thing I overlooked and we should have done already is the roll call. Can we, can we do the roll call at this stage? Just there are some councillors missing.
Councillor Carlson?
Present.
Councillor Kaufman?
Present.
Councillor Higgin?
Present.
Councillor Morrow?
Yep.
Councillor Miyashiro, he indicated he would be absent for this meeting. Councillor Parker has just stepped away.
Stepped away, but he is here. Okay.
Right. Acting Mayor Croson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Present.
And Mayor Spearman.
Present.
Thank you.
All present and participating with the exception of Councillor Miyashiro. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I now have a resolution for adoption of the agenda from Acting Mayor Croson. That the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on August 10th, 2021 be adopted as presented, including all communications as submitted by the city clerk. City clerk, are there any amendments?
Yes, Mayor Spearman. There is three amendments to this agenda. The first is an urgent business, official business resolution, and that's from yourself, Mayor Spearman. It's a request to second an AUMA resolution on regional centre funding, and that will be numbered 6.1. The second one is an urgent business in-camera verbal item, update on meeting with external party. That will be numbered 10.4. And the last is a late written public submission for Bylaw 6296, The Clean Energy Improvement Plan. Thank you.
Okay, so revise that to that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on August 10th, 2021 be adopted as amended, including all communications as submitted by the city clerk. Acting Mayor Croson?
I'll call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Are any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to presentations. And I'm going to invite Mr. Kelly to come forward with respect to the opportunity for the airport with Mr. Curtis Grad and Mr. Froda Skolbru from Modalis Infrastructure Partners regarding YQL Airport, Lethbridge Airport Business Plan 2021 to 2024. So we have with us Mr. Kelly and Mr. Curtis Grad. And is Mr. Skolbru online? Okay, thank you. Is your microphone working?
Hello. Thank you, your worship, and members of council. Before you start my clock, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just acknowledge your kind words earlier in the council meeting. All the successes that you've listed off there, it was never about me. It was always about we. From the directions from City Council to the countless hours that many staff have put into, our consultants, our community stakeholders such as the university, the college, the school boards, Lethbridge Housing Authority, the Aboriginal Housing Group. We've all shared in all these successes over my 21-year career here and it's been an honor and a privilege to be a public servant for the City of Lethbridge.
Kelly?
YQL Business Plan. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Grad, Mr. Skolbru, and Ms. Slovak, which were all instrumental in helping with the airport committee to develop the business plan and also the numerous times that both the committee, we worked with the committee reporting back to City Council over our journey since acquiring the airport has been quite a journey. And just to remind, everyone, in 2018, the City of Lethbridge purchased the airport from Lethbridge County. 2019, a master plan was created. There, at the same time, we, along with the same journey, went the KPMG review to do an operational review of the airport itself. But instead of using KPMG, we did a proposal call to get some airport experts in place to take a look at how we're operating and also review the master plan of our infrastructure needs moving forward. And the third component was to develop a business plan. Not only did we hire someone in here to talk the talk, but we actually brought them in to walk the walk. So they are here not just to help us write the plan, but help us implement the plan. We're going to continue to leverage their knowledge and their relationships in the, in the industry. Back in January of 2020, we actually had the business plan all ready to go and then, lo and behold, in February, March, a pandemic started to materialize, which had a dramatic effect on all industry around the world. And in fact, we had to learn how to pivot and, and take a look at what we had in the business plan and make significant modifications. And two of those being the recovery of passenger traffic. But what really stood out to us, and I think this is the main theme here, is that we can't just rely on passenger traffic to be the sole revenue for the airport. We need to be able to diversify because if we run into anything like this again, multiple streams of revenue are very important. Sorry, can you bring up the presentation? Oh, it's up here. Sorry, I'm not seeing. Looking up here. So if you can skip forward to the next and the next one, please. So I'm going to focus right now on traffic. At the Lethbridge Airport, traffic was down by 97%. It's interesting, yesterday, we had a phone meeting or a virtual meeting with Mr. Bartram, who is a business development with WestJet. And here's sharing some of the findings that they had with their operation. Their fleet consists of 180 planes. They had parked 155 of those planes. They were operating at 700 flights per day. They were down to 200 flights. That's a drop of 70%. They went from 14,000 employees down to 4,000 employees. Why I'm sharing this with you is that we're at the bottom end of the line here. What they're going to be focusing in on is one, first, hub-to-hub connections to make sure that the big centres, the Calgary's, the Edmonton's, Vancouver's, Toronto's, that they're all viable. And their main focus, what we need, is international travel to make these things happen. Once we see those things recoveries, it's like the hub and the spoke of the wheel. We're part, we're one of the spokes. And it's very important for us to be ready, but it's going to take time. In fact, he's talking, as in our reports, that Modalis has put forward is about, you know, a three-year recovery. So our key actions here is to continue to monitor, leverage our relationships that Modalis has with the various, with Air Canada's, Pacific Coastals, and Westjets of the world and see what opportunities might materialize. And, but pay attention to what's going on and not to speculate on anything. Next slide. As I alluded to before, our total revenues have dropped by 53%, and that was all related directly to passengers. If that's the car rental component of it, the parking fees that are out there, which are, you'll say, well, that's all diversity, Mr. Kelly, but it's all related to passenger traffic. We need to diversify and, and move forward. One thing that we have been working on over the past two years is updating our leases. A number of the leases were, that we inherited with the transfer from the county, had not been attended to in a number of years. So we've been negotiating with the various leaseholders out there to bring them up to more, more near-market rates. And also the potential of extending for some new areas of leasing. But what those would need to happen, and we'll get into this more on the land development component, is the annexation, the area structure plan, and outline planning processes that need to occur. At this time, we do not have any areas that we can lease. Even if a big fish or anyone that wanted to come around to us, we do not have any service parcels. So we're not ready, is the bottom line. But that's what the business plan outlines here for you. Next slide. Corporate governance. Since we acquired the airport back in 2018, we had reviewed various governance models. I note that both the mayor and myself had travelled out to Eastern Canada, had interviewed a number of people associated with various airports in the New Brunswick, PEI, and Nova Scotia area in particular. We had worked with the legal firm that actually brought forward the, and incorporated the Edmonton International Airport to look at 24 different airports to see how they operate and how they're governed. There afterwards, we employed, as part of the process with Modalis, about what the different options were, are. different options were, are. We went through a big matrix, a scoring system, to decipher what are the best fits for Lethbridge, which really came down to three options, which were a board, the, a contracted service, or continue to operate as a department of the City of Lethbridge. And one of the other ones is potentially to take a look at a municipally-owned corporation. But the state of affairs right now, with next, the revenue being very low, and our success with securing grants, the strategic direction has really come from the committee and council to date that will take us forward in the future. And our recommendation is that the governance model stays as a department of the City of Lethbridge, reporting through the general manager of Opportunity Lethbridge, the director of corporate and customer service, to the city manager, to city council to get our directions. However, there's two triggers here that we'd like to promote, and I know this will be discussed in the next item of City Council, which are two consecutive years of 50,000 net operating margins. So that would indicate that the airport would be stable moving forward. And also, the other trigger point is 150 annual passengers, and we can get into that through the question period. But that's for a city council to deliberate in their next item of business moving forward. Move forward. The operations, as you're aware, we did an operational review. It identified approximately 30 different items for consideration for improvements. The findings from Modalis is that there was no significant or catastrophic items that we needed to attend from an operational point of view. The biggest concern was about the ground lighting system, electrical system. If you don't have an operational ground lighting system, you do not have an operational airport. Again, the talk-the-talk and walk-the-walk scenario is that Modalis is working with our management team to implement all the findings and make sure that we're adhered to all federal regulations, but not just adhere to them, be better, because we are better. We know we can be better. Go on to the next. Capital. In the master plan of 2019, it identified $34 million of infrastructure investments to be done over a 20-year period. We were very fortunate, and it was very strategic of the airport committee and City Council to be able to leverage $2.6 million of city funding to secure another $23 million to total $26 million for terminal renovations. And if you recall, the terminal was built 40 years ago when there was no security needs. 9/11 didn't occur. It was actually built as a lounge. But things have changed. In the renovation, we get quite a larger secure room. We have washrooms on both sides. That's craziness. Hey! And you're gonna, I believe it will be substantially complete in December. The, what it looks like already is night and day compared to what you had seen in the past. And all the other infrastructure investments with the, again, the electrical system, the new water line that we've put out there to help with fire suppression, because that was a large risk, as you recall, we had an incident out there a number of years ago with one of our tenants, the rehab of taxiways, aprons, and more recently, the WD investment, Western Economic Diversification. This is the one set of items, along with beautifying the airport, that we could add to the customer experience enhancement. That is not related directly to airlines, because we cannot control schedules, late flights, early flights, or no flights, but we can influence the customer experience in the terminal. So that investment from Ratty with the new baggage carousel, wheelchair pressures, et cetera, fantastic investment. And that particular investment, we're going to be coming back on September the 7th, because we have to amend the CIP yet again, even though we did get the grant. We need your authority, City Council, to be able to move forward with that scope of work and spend those dollars. Moving forward with all the capital projects, what we need to do in our business planning is to reassess. And the reassessment will take place based on what activity, what the business is doing, how the industries are going on. But I'm going to stress again, the biggest thing that this plan puts forward is, one, about governance, which you'll decide about later today, but two is about diversification. We need multiple sources of revenue to come in. You have 900 acres available, let's leverage it. It will be a great distribution hub moving forward, partnering with TriMac, the trains, various logistics companies that will want warehousing, and promote cargo moving, not just passengers. With that, I'd like to take a pause with City Council. There's more detail in the presentation if you want to address that, and I have the various experts alongside me to answer any and all of your questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kelly, in addition to the $26 million, council has committed money for the terminal upgrade as well, which don't qualify for operational grants?
That's correct.
That's, was that $6.5 million?
If you allow me, Mr. Mayor, I can go through the numbers. So the original budget of .7 million was for the design of the renovations. That was then amended to 7.5 million, which would be the renovation and including the design and construction. The next amendment was for, to take it to 18.68 million, and that included the funding from MSP. If City Council remembers, we did quite an exercise identifying various projects, which included the electrical ground lighting and various civil works, aprons, taxiways, and some runway improvements. The next amendment took it to 25.25 million, which we were able to leverage the ACAP funding, which gave us more opportunities to enhance aprons and taxiways. And then the next one that will come forward on September the 9th will be the Ratty or the Western Economic Diversification Grant of $583,000 for the customer enhancement components.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Grad, for the work on this as well. When we look at items like 4.4, the strategic action, or 7.2, when you're looking at the marketing strategy, these are more of possible actions or future requirements than they are an actual business plan. Are we still missing a fair amount of information regarding the air side of what we do in terms of customer feedback or citizen feedback, user feedback, user involvement and impact on airport operations?
In the, the plan itself, and Mr. Grad can add on to this, there's recommendations to set up various committees. And that's what we want to do, but that's, if you approve this plan, that will be action. So we need, we need advice from the people that are out there and potential other customers coming in. So in line with your question, absolutely, we'd like to move forward with that.
Thank you. You talk about the, sort of the joint focus, which is absolutely correct, that heaven forbid we go through another pandemic, you need to still be generating revenue, and that's where the ground side of what goes on there continues to happen. Ultimately, though, the operation of the airport, at least in the mind of the citizenry, is more about access to the world. And you've talked about, you know, MyQL and One Stop to the World, or whatever that strategy was identified as. Ultimately, it's about getting people moving through there, is it not? Or is it about the fact that it's a new parcel of land? When I read this, it always seems to fall on the side of this is about more land and opportunity associated, the potential to grab things associated with air, as opposed to a place where you can go and park and get on an airplane and see the world, as opposed to driving to Calgary or Great Falls?
To answer your question, it's both. I'm not trying to say that land development's more important than the passenger development and the airport as an opportunity to promote tourism. It's all of the above. So there's a balance. We're just saying that we're, right now, we're so heavily weighted on passenger, and we saw moving from Air Canada to get, and then we had two airlines, Air Canada, WestJet, and our passenger volume went up crazy. We thought we were going to beat the world. We thought this is the best thing that we did, and then the pandemic came along and it identified a risk. So it's very important and incumbent on this council and future councils to invest on both ends. And even if there's a third or a fourth end, we need diversification out there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Any further questions? Counselor Higgin?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Thank you for the presentation. Now, Michael, you'd mentioned about the Western Diversification, which I think it's, what's the Prairies Economic Development Canada monies that are coming into town? And I think you said it's about half a million dollars that we'd got from that? Now, with the 149 million that we figure that should be coming out this area, is there possibility we could be getting more?
Well, as I described...
We already knew, it's like 20,000-foot level right now with this announcement being back in...
I described the airport manager as being the luckiest man in the world, because he never saw a dime before this. The City Council and our hounding of the various, I'm not sure if you realize how many phone calls and emails that we sent out to these various agencies, as I say, it's trying to slay the dragon. If there's an opportunity, we're going to sniff it out and find it. And if we can apply for more, we will apply for more. So there's always an opportunity.
Like 150 million with seven communities, the chance could be about 20 million that we could see, but currently, we've got allocated, half a million we've got from that so far.
Yes. And then our friends at Modalis as well, as they keep on top of this, they see these things all the time, and they have their resources that say, you know, Lawrence or Mr. Airport Manager, you should be chasing after this thing. And we can actually help. And one of the nice things to have them on board, they can help us write the proposals, write the grant applications, so it's in line with what those authorities are looking for. All the nice, pleasing words.
That's, that's, these letters are written jointly with the city and obviously the airport manager, which seemed airport manager for quite some time, correct?
Yeah. I mean, they're the city's letters, they're not the airport's letter, they come from the City of Lethbridge.
Right, yeah, of course.
We just have lots of resources to help us write it properly.
Okay, so they could have been before, but of course, now the resources. Thank you, appreciate that.
There has been quite a lot of change, including the airport manager. I think at the time we took over the airport, the airport manager was retiring, and so now the, now we have Lawrence, but it was great. The progress has been impressive, and I do thank you, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Grad. Some of the funding that's come forward is going to improve the passenger experience, for example, even pre-check-ins and things like that, some of the technology that was funded in the last week. And what we see is all that, those types of things are essential to a modern airport, right? So...
Yeah, that's correct. And I just want to take you back, the renovation of the terminal, what we present to the committee and to council, it was an accordion type of investment. So as things occur, we can expand to the south of the existing terminal. So we worked within the major, the four walls that we had. We informed you that there is a significant amount of infrastructure, the HVAC, the electrical was old, needed some upgrades. But also the plan, we do have a master plan of being able to continuously expand until, I think it was 180,000 passenger movements through there. So you're on a good course.
Mr. Grad, if I may ask a question to you. When you did your audit of the airport, the strengths and the weaknesses, one of the priorities that you identified as a weakness was security. What plans are in place? What progress are we making on addressing that issue?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Particularly when it comes to security and the existing holding you have, or the one that was there prior to the renovation. It was all crammed into a very small space. It didn't meet the separation requirements, but also the privacy requirements, that you're literally searching people's bags while others are viewing that process. The renovations allow for more space to be able to do that more properly and in a more private manner. But as Michael has mentioned as well, as the traffic grows, you can start to accordion the building, because you're going to need larger security rooms, you're going to need more secure areas to pull people's bags aside to do detailed searches. And the single most important improvement is being able to move that security scanning machine to a more private location. And I do think that the, you know, the physical security around the airport and the fences, they certainly all meet the physical security requirements, but given your security location, the one that used to be back against the front of the wall by the curb was in the wrong location. It is now going to be on a location where they can keep an eye on airside as well as what's going on in the terminal, because they have two roles. They're there to help facilitate the customers and the public coming in to receive and to meet and greet passengers that are coming, but they need to have their eye on airside to make sure that they're keeping an eye on any issues that may arise with the arriving passengers and not allowing any breaches. So the physical security requirements are improving, but it also allows for the privacy, and I think that's very important.
Thank you.
And, yes, and also the hiring of the security person within the team of YQL, that was one position that was not fully, fully staffed. And so now there's a dedicated resource that is putting that together. There are new requirements coming forward as well. Three or four years ago, they implemented what they called a safety management system. Now there's a security management system, which is of a similar design, but it's providing a much stronger responsibility on management to do the proper auditing and procedures that are required in advance of any issues, because you don't want to be trying to explain why you weren't having the procedures in place if there was, in fact, a breach or some sort of security incident on the airport. So the security personnel, the person being responsible for developing, implementing, and not doing it in isolation, but you're doing it with all the players on the airport, the Corps of Commissioners, with the airlines themselves, and everybody else, including the ground handlers that are often contracted ground handlers, working as a single unit. The regulator really doesn't care that there are multiple spokes in this wheel. All those spokes have to be working together, and that's what the security plan does. So that key hire is the one that was missing. But by and large, from the 2019 audit that we did, we felt that your team is doing an extremely good job at managing and operating the airport with a very limited budget, but the one, the one item that was short was the security, security position, which has since been filled.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Thank you very much for the presentation and for the information. So the governance model that's being suggested is to have, to function as a city department, look at the goals, and move ahead when we hit those triggers after two years. Can you tell us of any airport that functions well as a city department that you know of?
There are a few examples out there that are, I would call them hybrids, and I can tell a direct story about Abbotsford Airport. They operate with what they call the Abbotsford Airport Authority. I was the airport general manager there for three years, so I know it well. It is actually a committee of council, but, you know, it's basically enacted and empowered by the city to assist, but council has the ultimate authority. So it is not an authority, it is a committee of council. It operates reasonably well, but there was a very early decision that the airport would run independent, but as a city department, or as an independent entity within the city, not so much as a city department, and it's been very successful. The other one that has been successful, but for different reasons, is Kelowna. It was a city airport from the day it was founded, back in the 30s or the 40s, I guess it was, but it has set up a separate committee that is responsible for giving direction and approving the strategy of airport management, but they've been building that up for the last 80 years. And so there's a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge within the city to be able to operate, and I think, and to do it strategically. I think the challenge you had as a city is you were taking over an airport and you had no institutional knowledge of managing the airport. So our mandate in 2019 was to come in, do an assessment, and provide you a checklist of the things that were, that were going well and the things that you needed to augment. And one of the things we actually did raise, and this goes back to the financials, was that it is important to have a balance between... that it is important to have a balance between non-aeronautical and aeronautical revenue. That aeronautical revenue is very cyclical, whether it's based on aircraft landings or number of passengers. If the market contracts, if the economy falters, as we found, and nobody dreamed back in 2019, it would be to that extent, but we've had others. We've had, we've had the, you know, the oil crisis in the 70s, we've had the 9/11 in the early 2000s. We had all these examples of where traffic dips and then it takes time to come back. The airports that are most successful and ride that storm, or those storms the best, are the ones that have a very strong land base to be able to maintain revenue because land revenue is very consistent and it's not driven by traffic. And I'll use those two examples. Abbotsford has a lot of non-aeronautical revenue. They've got raspberry farmers that provide them with $300,000 a year in revenue just from raspberries alone. It sounds a bit odd, but it happens to be a very ideal place to raise raspberries because it's, it's got the right conditions. Nanaimo Airport, we developed a 100-acre golf course. What do airports and golf courses have to do with each other? Not much, but airports need a lot of land to be able to operate and there's a lot of reserve land that may not be used within the lifetime of people that are using it. So using it for an alternative use, and that's the suggestion that we've given to Michael and his team, you've got a lot of vacant land out there that is just growing grass at this point, but could be used for alternative uses in the short, medium, and even the long term to generate income while you're waiting for aviation-related development to materialize.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Speer.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
You're worship, just kind of going on that non-aeronautical thing and I mean, I know we're dreaming way, way in the future, but, and you being in the airline business, what do you foresee in Lethbridge specifically beyond, you know, processing plants that need to get things to the airport and that are close by? But do you foresee, for example, are restaurants viable? Are, is a hotel viable out in that area? Or anything non-aeronautical, but yet related to the aeronautic industry?
It's all about building blocks and building traffic, but at the end of the day, at 100,000 passengers, there's only so much you can hope to support. So for example, a restaurant in the terminal at 100,000 passengers, which was the level of traffic prior to COVID, that's very marginal. Like back in the early 90s when I was the manager of Nanaimo, 100,000 passengers, that cafe always struggled. But Abbotsford, on the other hand, they had a destination restaurant near the Flying Club. And because it was a destination restaurant and it didn't just depend on passengers, because passengers are only there for a very narrow window of time, and especially the small airport, your advantage is it's easy to get to, you in and out of security quickly and you don't have to be to the airport more than a half an hour. So you're not going to sit down necessarily for a meal unless the meters and greeters are waiting for an airplane that's late. The guy in Nanaimo only made money when the flights didn't arrive because then he was feeding people waiting around for airplanes to arrive. In Abbotsford, the restaurant, the famous Red Baron Restaurant, did very well. The restaurant at Chilwak Airport was famous for its pie. Well, what does pie have to do with airplanes? Well, private airplanes would fly into that airport just to buy pie. We called it the $100 pie. Because by the time you paid for the pie and the fuel for the airplane, it was a $100 pie, right? So there's a lot of building blocks, but I think the really important message in this business plan, that 26 million in funding that's been secured, it's going to allow you not just to maintain, but to build the foundation of what you had. You had a 40-year-old lighting system, a 40-year-old terminal, and a pavement that needed to be replaced within the next five years or so. That was a huge bill that had you not been able to secure that money, you would have probably had to gone back and adjusted your passenger fee on a per-passenger basis to be able to generate enough income. And it's an inverse relationship. As you start increasing the per-passenger fee, passengers start making a decision, well, I'm just going to hop in the car and go to Calgary. And the airlines start saying, well, I'm not going to put an extra airplane in here because my margins are low. And it just becomes a race to the bottom as you have to start jacking up your rates to be, to the passenger to pay for everything. Getting a distribution where you've got aviation, non-aviation, airside and landside businesses all contributing, those are the most successful airports.
So it's not unrealistic for, to put out, you know, the message to creative entrepreneurs to make the airport a destination. It could happen.
Absolutely. There's also one fundamental thing, and I keep on talking about the Abbotsford example, but Conair Aviation, which eventually built Cascade, they maintain 737s and large airplanes, but it was built off of a foundation work of they were maintaining water bombers, right? So they built the facility to do that and then they expanded, but they couldn't expand for one reason. They didn't have aircraft maintenance engineer technical training in Abbotsford. So what they did was they went to BCIT in Vancouver and they negotiated a deal with the local Fraser College, which was a college at the time and not a university, but it allowed them to start training people locally to become aircraft maintenance engineers because you're not going to have a maintenance business if you don't have the labor, the skilled labor to do the work. And the really interesting part is in the first three years of that program, Conair and Cascade took 97% of the graduates out of that system. So my suggestion to you is with your very well-respected college and university capabilities in Lethbridge, if you could develop an AME course, Aircraft Maintenance Engineer Program, it's a chicken and egg issue. You're not going to have the opportunity to grow the business here if you're not generating the skilled labor.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr.-
Counselor Moro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure I, you mentioned three airports, Abbotsford, Nanaimo, and Kelowna. So naturally, I'm starting to think and compare Lethbridge to those three. Are you actually comparing those three to Lethbridge and saying that what we're going to do here will make us a Kelowna, an Abbotsford, or a Nanaimo? Did I hear you say that correctly?
Those comparisons were primarily about governance model. I was using examples of where things have been successful. Lethbridge, their situation is unique, their story is unique, but it all really comes down to the catchment area that you possess. And so within an hour's drive of Lethbridge, you have passengers, you have skilled labor, you have certain demands and you have to capitalize on it. The business plan aims to work on leveraging what you already know you have in terms of people that want to travel, but there's other areas that you can build on, like developing aircraft maintenance engineer capacity in the community, developing land on the airport. Without annexation and without servicing, you can't even entertain the opportunity of developing land because the developer's not going to wait and say, well, I'll come back in three years once the annexation's done and you've got the servicing. They want to make their plans now. So the best investment you can make while we're waiting for the passenger business to come back is in invest in, in the servicing of the airport and facilitating the annexation will allow you to start developing the land.
So help me out here because I have similar, similar thoughts and feelings to Counselor Kaufman was kind of getting to earlier. So when I put up my hand as one member of council to take over the airport, I did it for one reason and one reason only, and that was to get people from Lethbridge and surrounding area to fly out of Lethbridge. Not out of Great Falls, not out of Calgary. That was, that was my whole reason and intention for wanting to own the airport. But what I'm hearing now more than anything is, well, we'll wait when the passengers come. Let's just develop land. So help me out here. Are we, did we actually maybe, maybe do the wrong thing and we are just going to be pumping money into this thing where we're not, never going to see any return and we're never going to see a successful airport like the ones you've mentioned? Because to be honest with you, if you have a successful airport where you've got passengers, it doesn't really matter to me what, what the, whether it's an authority, whether it's a, you know, a department of the city of Lethbridge or whatever it is, if it's a success, it's a success. So help me understand that a little bit better because I'm getting mixed messages from, from you and also from what I'm hearing presented today.
So I'll jump in here. With the, the city acquiring the airport, the, what was happening in, with our airport in Southern Alberta, there was not a great deal of investment going in there. It was deteriorating and we were, for Southern Alberta, in jeopardy of losing an airport as being an asset. I believe, and city council saw this as an asset, that this was a key economic component slash catalyst for, for not just the city of Lethbridge, but for Southern Alberta.
Sorry, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Kelly, sorry to interrupt, just so I understand, because what you might think is an asset is different than what I see this as an asset. I just finished saying that, to me, this is an asset to get people from this area, Southern Alberta, wherever, to fly out of Lethbridge. That's the asset that I see. What's the asset maybe? Can you define what you mean by-
I totally agree with your perspective of it being an asset to move passengers and people around Canada, North America, and the world. But there is the hidden asset that has never been tapped into, which is the other revenue stream, being the land development component, to build business opportunities, to let other private businesses invest, grow, and thrive around that asset. And it should complement moving passengers around and, but more as important, moving product around. As the mayor and I had experienced out in Eastern Canada, why those airports thrive is that they had a hot commodity that needed to move, be moved out quickly, which was seafood. It needed the airline to move it. Moving it by truck to Lethbridge and Calgary would take far too long. What are those other opportunities that we can see here? What I'm pointing out is that this is a hidden gem. There's lots of opportunity that can come with it. Passenger traffic, moving people around is very important. Promoting tourism in Southern Alberta is very important. Getting to see our relatives in Australia, in my case, is very important to me. But creating more revenue, creating more tax revenue for the city, tremendous opportunity.
Would you care to add to that or is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
If I might add-
Yes, please.
If I might add one more comment. You'd asked earlier about what are the direct comparisons? The best comparison I can give you is Nanaimo Airport. In 1991, it was a city-run airport owned by the federal government, was largely neglected by the feds and undercapitalized. Sounds very familiar. It was doing 100,000 passengers. 30 years later, with the focus of both the city promoting the change in governance, but also promoting the investment in the airport, the airport is now handling over 500,000 passengers a year. At the end of 2019, has dramatically expanded its infrastructure to meet the demands of WestJet, Air Canada, and others, but it has also relied on developing its land in order to keep its costs down, keep its administration efficient, and make sure that the airlines look at it as a place that they can operate successfully, not only commercially, but that it has the right infrastructure, that it's got landing systems, it's got all the other things it needs to function as a viable airport. And conceivably, in 30 years, with a focused development plan, as we have in both, the business plan is a five-year perspective, but the master plan is a 25 to 30, it's reasonable to consider that this airport could be doing a half a million passengers in 30 years because it happened at Nanaimo and it's almost a carbon copy situation from 1991 in Nanaimo.
Thank you. My final question, if I may, Mr. Mayor, there's two options that I see in the presentation. Both of them are managed as a city department. I'm kind of struggling with understanding the difference between the two, but my question is, well, first, if you don't mind explaining in, in simple terms, the difference between the two and how our residents, how our taxpayers would see one being more beneficial than the other. And number two, why are there not more options? Why only these two? Why should they be both managed as a city department?
The committee looked at other options as well, including having an independent airport authority or running as a commission. But at this early stage, we felt that it was important to have financial stability and the best way to do that would be to operate as a city department until the business stabilized post-COVID.
So this is the recommendation by the committee and the committee has seen other options then?
Yes, we have.
And you don't really care to share with council the rest of the options?
I don't think there's any hesitancy. I think that it would be difficult at this point to, to go straight into, an airport authority would require a legislative amendment as well. But, and a commission, there would be some challenges getting a commission going off the ground. I think two more years as a department, we felt provided stability moving forward.
Well, thank you for that.
I would say, I also visited Moncton and Charlottetown airports. Moncton has, it's a city of about 72,000 and it has a drawing area of another 70. Total population, 140,000 people. Annual passenger flights pre-COVID was 750,000 per year. And Charlottetown is a little different. It's, it's a capital city, of course, but they were about 375,000, 400,000 annual passenger. So again, a population on the island, P E I of about 140,000. So there's huge potential. Both airports had sun flights flying out of there in, in select seasons. Both airports actively promoted the actual airport as an, as an economic development. There's huge potential for us, but recovering from COVID and getting to the trigger volumes that are outlined in the report is going to be key to the success of the airport going forward. Mr. Kelly?
May I, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out on city council, in the detail of the business plan, section nine, on page 59, is detail, looked at the eight different models that was investigated and presented and evaluated by the airport committee, which resulted in the recommendation that's moving forward now. And if you just be patient with me, you know, it was about a department, committee or board of the city, city-owned corporation or a mini-corp, a nonprofit commission or authority, management contract, a joint venture, a private concession, meaning sell it off in its entirety, or a private partner ownership. All of these things are still on the table for city council or future city councils to consider. It was the recommendation coming from the committee because of the financial situation that the airport's in right now, not being stable, as the mayor has pointed out, and also that we're in a state of recovery right now. It'd be best to make sure that we're on the right track. City council has full control of what their investments will be, but would have the opportunity to entertain these other models moving forward.
Thank you. Counselor Higgin?
Thank you, Mayor Speerman. I'm just a little confused here. I think we're just on 4.1 as just for information, but we're talking about different options. Is that not 5.1? This is later? Is that not true? Like-
Two together, yep. We're talking about this for information, but yep, we're-
So, so are we just going to finish with the information and then get to this? Because it seems like we're dealing with 5.1 in 4.1, or am I wrong?
We're doing both, but 5.1's a submission, yeah.
Okay, so right now, we're just voting on to receive the information as, receive it as information, is that correct?
Answering any questions that anyone has.
Okay, so I do have another question. Thank you. So we talked a little bit about the land and offsetting the costs and what's, I guess my question is, so any of the revenue from the land out there, and I don't know if Michael or yourself can answer this, the revenue that comes, is that going to stay out at the airport then? Because if we're going to offset this, would that not come into the general revenue to the city?
So there's two pots of revenue that will come in and we forecast it and it's identified in the business plan as well. One is the land leases and traditionally in all airports is they utilize land leases to offset the cost of the operation of the airport. We, at today's rate, if we develop the entire, if the entire 900 acres was developed today, would generate $10 million in revenue. That would clearly more than offset the, the cost of the operation of the airport and have enough to go into some kind of reserves for future capital investment. And then after that, go back into general revenue of the city. The second component is taxes. Again, based on the 2021 mill rate, the city of Lethbridge, if it was fully developed- uh, the city leverage, if it, that it was fully developed today, that would generate another ten million dollars of revenue. You're looking at twenty million dollars, uh, coming in that you're not enjoying today.
Well, I, I, and I, I see that, and I understand, and I think that would be great, but I've heard that the land is gonna offset the costs, so we can keep people flying out of here, and by not having them drive to Calgary. So the plan though, from what I've seen, is that this revenue comes to the city, it's the city department, and it can go back. I just didn't see a plan for keeping the revenues out there to, to offset these costs, because I couldn't find anything when I heard that, that the land is gonna offset costs. I couldn't find anything in there that the revenue would stay at the airport.
A good observation. We, we will go back and make that, uh, clear when we come back with an update of the plan, um, cause I anticipate what you're gonna ask us to do is accept the business plan, but that we come back and report on an annual basis, and make further recommendations moving forward of how to, how stabilize the, the airport moving forward and its continuous growth and success.
This helps keeps council from having to say, okay, now to keep costs down, we're gonna pull from general revenue and send it back out to offset the costs of, of not flights, but some of those incurred costs, so.
Totally agree. Totally agree. So we, we're, we're fully prepared to be coming back and report on an annual basis, or whatever the council sees fit, um, moving forward. But I will also implore that if you don't, uh, take a look at the land development, and if we continue on in, um, in a recovery process, this is a burden on taxation right now, with, with the current status that we're in. Uh, if we don't find other revenues, is that it's gonna continue to hammer on our tax base.
Taxes and this other land offsetting the costs of?
Well, nothing, nothing today. You can only rely on tax, tax, and we're not even collecting the tax from the airport lands, because it's in another jurisdiction.
Right. Alright, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Counselor Morrow?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I need to apologize. That was me jumping ahead to five point one. I'm sorry. And Counselor Higgins, thanks for bringing that up.
Okay. Okay, are there any further questions on the presentation so far? Okay, I see none. I'll ask, uh, the deputy mayor to read the resolution.
Have a resolution from Mayor Spearman. Be it resolved that city council receive this presentation and report as information. Mayor Spearman?
Thank you. So, uh, we did receive the detailed report and the, uh, presentation to council. Uh, it's as simple as receiving at this point for, for information as stated, and then we would look at five point one, which is, uh, compatible with the same resolution. So I ask for council's support on, uh, receiving this for information.
A question has been called. Hall in favor? Opposed?
Any opposed?
Carried.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to five point one.
Uh, also a resolution from, uh, counselor, uh, from, uh, Mayor Spearman. Be it resolved that city council adopt option number one, manage as a city department with current management and contract services unchanged, and accept the report as information, and further be it resolved that the airport committee be dissolved. Uh, Mayor Spearman?
Thank you. I think, I believe the airport committee comprised of, uh, Counselor, Acting Mayor Croson, and Counselor Carlson and myself, we've been meeting for the past, uh, uh, two and a half years, and certainly since the acquisition of the airport from Lethbridge County. Uh, there has been substantial progress made, and, uh, we have come across an, an unfortunate situation with COVID, which has really, uh, created an inter- an interruption in terms of passenger travel. Uh, we certainly believe that the airport's going to require support and, uh, and continued investment, but, uh, a substantial portion of that investment has already taken place. Uh, in order to stabilize the airport, we are recommending that it remain a department of the city for at least two more years, and that if we hit, uh, volumes of a hundred and fifty thousand annual passengers for two years in a row, and with operating surpluses of five hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, two years in a row, uh, be- before transitioning to another, uh, model. Further, that there be, uh, at least annual reports to city council on progress and, uh, developments in the business plan as proposed. So, uh, that's the recommendation.
Are there any, any questions?
Counselor Higgins, I'll help you with the questions.
Thank you. You don't have the big board in front of you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you. Uh, a question I have is, so we're up here, and it sounds like it's something we need to get done right away. Do we have a deadline? Like, when is this contract up? Is it coming here in the next couple of months, or the current contract that we're in? Or the?
Or you?
You know, with, with this, uh, um...
Medalis?
With, with, yes.
Well, Medalis's contract goes to December twenty twenty-four, and again, they, they act as a resource for us. They're not managing or, uh, giving oversight to the, to the airport. City council is giving oversight.
As a department?
As a department of the city of Lethbridge. This is one of the goals that was identified, um, with the airport committee and city council when we initially, um, when ci- the city took it over from the county leverage, is to investigate the governance model that would be appropriate for the Lethbridge Airport. And in our investigation, again, as I, uh, talked about in the last item, we investigated, uh, eight, eight different possibilities, and working with the airport committee, and looking at the current status of today, and especially with the COVID issue that we're doing, and we're going, and we are in a recovery program right now, we thought, um, the recommendation from the committee is to, um, uh, as the mayor had pointed out in the resolution, is maintain it as a, a department of the city of Lethbridge. This gives you full control of any future expenditures, um, um, and direction of where the air- airport's going. Other models, you still have control, but every time that you move away, you, you lose more control. And why I say about control, everyone will always be looking for a lifeline back financially to the, uh, to the city. So if you have another dip in the economy, if you have a nine eleven, or a SARS, or a COVID, they're still gonna be knocking on your door, looking, looking for a, a handout. So right now, while you're, we're, um, doing cost control, um, the recommendation is to keep, um, allow you to have full control and give...
Pretty much running the way that it is right now, with the exception of, we've, we've got, uh, you know, to get reaches five hundred K in net operating profit, a hundred and fifty thousand annual passengers. So that could be, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have a deadline on this, could be twenty years, this could be seven years.
Three years. But the other component, as, um, I presented in the business plan, is what we want to enact is an advisory board, um, that, uh, I think, uh, Counselor Kaufman had alluded to in some of, uh, one of his questions, that would help us, give us insight to the, with the users of the airport out there and, uh, future business, uh, potential, um, partners. But then again, because we're gonna be reporting back to city council, we as a department, you get that information, we give you recommendations, and you set the direction.
You, the, and the, the next question I have is, so the business plan is put together by Medalis, obviously, correct?
They were a resource working with us.
A resource. Is the recommendation not to have Medalis continue this then? So I'm just wondering, a business plan recommending someone that worked on it, recommending themselves? Sorry, I've just, I've just...
No, they're not recommending themselves. They have been hired on originally to do the operational review, then help us implement the, the betterment of our, um, of our operations. Second was to write a business plan, but help us implement the business plan. What we want to be able to do is leverage their connections, their knowledge of the industry, the people that they know at WestJet Air Canada, Pratt &amp; Whitney, whomever, um, cause we need to be introduced. We don't have those relationships now, and that was, that's the advantage of having them on board. Uh, their contract, as I said before, ends December, um, thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. There is an opportunity for a five-year extension after that, or up to a five-year extension, if the council of the day still sees that there is a value to the, um, that they're bringing to the table for us.
Last question, if I could, Mayor Spearman. So, w- with the funding that we received with this Western diversification, what's it called now? Gosh, I'm trying to remember. The Prairies Economic Development Canada, and the possibility of maybe twenty, thirty million dollars coming. And it sounds to me that there's not a huge rush to get this, or maybe there's, there's belief that there's a rush to get this done, but with this in its infancy, this, this, uh, program that's just been announced federally, I'm, I'm concerned of locking into, to something, and, and furthermore, discussing the group that put together a business plan as part of, of, of actually gonna be implementing this. And so I just, that's just some of my current, so I just wanna know if, if there's a huge rush, and if this was, has to be done today, or if it can be done in six months, if, what would be the difference, if you can let me know?
Hey, um, I'll just, uh, um, reiterate. Medalis works for us, works for the city leverage. They're not leading. We're, we're leading, uh, but they're a fantastic resource. The, um, is there a rush for you to make a decision on the governance? We've been working on this since twenty eighteen. That, that's in your control of how you want to deliberate this today or not.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. So not a rush. Appreciate that.
Counselor Kaufman?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, thank you again for the information. Um, to the, uh, city treasurer designate, um, in the last budget, uh, the actual budget deliberation back in twenty eighteen, council passed initiative N ninety-eight, which was for a million dollars in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two towards airport governance and operations. Uh, we still have, as I understand, the two hundred thousand dollar, um, or two hundred and ten thousand dollar annual expenditure, but we've got the one million dollars designated for twenty twenty-one. Is that, or, sorry, twenty twenty-two, that is going to go towards this then as well? Has it become department money, or has it become airport money?
So that N ninety-eight resolution, I'm sorry, your worship to Counselor Kaufman, um, that N ninety-eight resolution, if you remember, that actually was funded into the airport reserve. The whole operations of the airport, um, expenditures ultimately goes to the airport reserve. So, um, basically, any, any of the costs associated with either the, you know, contract or so forth, run-through operations, and funded, backstopped by the, by the reserve.
Okay, so it goes the other way then as well, if any revenues coming in go straight into the reserve? So it's a net zero on, on general revenues for the, uh, organization?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, there are no more questions. Uh, I will open for debate.
Sorry, Mr., uh...
Sorry.
Deputy Mayor, I have a con-
Sorry, Joe. Counselor Morrow?
Um, I'm just looking again at the presentation. So, um, it looks like, um, the option, like the first option, option one, says that this, this would remain in place until Y Q L reaches the key triggers of two consecutive years of five hundred thousand net operating profit and more than a hundred and fifty thousand annual passengers. Can you tell me right now, where are we at today with the net operating profit, and where are we at with the annual passengers?
I think the best year that we could rely on is probably two thousand and nineteen, which is pre-COVID, and, uh, our passenger volumes were right about a hundred thousand?
Hundred and eight thousand.
Hundred and eight thousand? And the airport at that time was turning a profit.
Yeah, over the past year and a half, we went down, we went from seeing, um, five flights a day, uh, down to zero flights a day, to two scheduled a week, and I, and I wanna use the word scheduled, because they often did not happen, uh, to four, three scheduled a week, to five scheduled a week, which none of, not always happen. Our numbers are, I don't have it in front of me today, but they're low, and as the, uh, acting city treasurer has put out, we're not making any money at this time.
Okay, so we had a hundred and eight thousand, from what I heard from the mayor, a hundred and eight thousand passengers in twenty nineteen, and our net operating profit, you don't have a clue, or in just the ballpark of where we were in twenty nineteen?
Break even, I think. I believe we were at a break even point at that point.
Essentially break even.
Okay, so where I'm going with this, based on what you guys know, to get to a hundred and fifty thousand passengers a year, and a net operating profit of five hundred thousand a year, realistically, what needs to happen? How much money will we have to sink in, and when do you think we will see these two numbers actually attained? Since you've been working on this for three years, you might have a...
Based on the twenty nineteen forecast, we thought we were three to four years away from achieving those, those goals. So, um, however, we're starting from scratch again.
Things were looking very optimistic in twenty nineteen. We'd done, uh, community surveys. Uh, prior to that, uh, we had over six hundred businesses respond to the community surveys, asking that we continue to develop the airport, and we had, I think it was over fifteen hundred residents participated, saying they would use the, the airport if the service improved, and, uh, they'd be willing to, to fly from Lethbridge. So there was some optimism going forward. We've also invested in the AgriFood hub at, uh, Lethbridge Exhibition. That's supposed to be completed by the, I believe, the, uh, sometime in twenty twenty-two, and I think if, when that's operating full-time in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, having a viable airport is going to enhance, and those, we've been saying those two projects will support each other. So you could say optimistically, tho- that could happen in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, but that would be optimistic. We certainly have to continue to invest in air, in the airport in order to build, uh, relationship with the airlines, and to provide, uh, the service, and as we've been told today, uh, it's a balance between, uh, serving and enhancing the passenger experience, and also providing an investment and developing the airport lands, so, which we don't yet own.
Uh, okay, so quite possibly, we really don't know. We could be talking the same thing ten years from now.
Depends whether you're optimistic or pessimistic, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Higgins?
Did you, after?
Uh, I was just gonna speak to the, to the scenarios that they're looking at internationally. Nobody's forecasting they're doing scenarios because of the uncertainty. The expectation is internationally, we'll be back to twenty nineteen levels by twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, which is also consistent with what you've just been, um, talking about with the local developments. So if you think about, um, the international traffic takes longer to recover, domestic traffic is actually recovering at a much faster rate, and Lethbridge is much more domestically focused, which is positive. So if you apply that recovery scenario to Lethbridge, you can expect that realistically, you're probably looking at getting back to those levels of twenty nineteen by twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and with a continued growth from, say, a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand, from there, even an organic growth, you could be looking at a hundred and fifty thousand by, I would say, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. But that is based on a reset and a recovery, and what we're seeing internationally, but also locally as well.
Counselor Higgins?
I'm just curious, as I scroll through here, we, have we seen the final agreement? Do you have the final agreement in, in our documentation? Cause I couldn't find a final agreement that we're actually going to be voting on, or considering a motion, but I haven't seen the final agreement. It's something, something...
I'm not sure what, you, you referred to this earlier. I'm sorry, Counselor Higgins, what agreement are you looking for?
The agreement that is going to, so it's gonna be brought into, to, what it looks like here is to have city hall have this continuing the way that we have it currently. But we also have in here, from what I'm understanding, the, just go back to it here, sorry. Oh, I've lost it now. Resolution, is it up? Now, is, where's the opt, the option that we're talking about? Uh, so manage as a city department with current management, contract services unchanged. So, but we've also got these different numbers in there. So for example, we need to reach a certain level, we need to, so that's, that's in here as a recommendation, but I'm wondering if that document, we have that, or if it's just as, not listed? Or if it's just as, not listed here, it's pretty, not much to that.
To help you out, I'd recommend that there's an amendment to this resolution.
Well, I'm going to do amendment anyways, but I'm just.
To include the two trigger points. So it's very clear that this is, that it made it to clear this up is to manage as a city department and to reevaluate the governance and operating model when those two trigger points are our near term.
We don't have an expiry date? We don't have, it just seems like they're so limited here. And so actually, if I, I'd like to put in amendment if I could, that we, if it's, I don't know if postpone is the right word, if we table this to January 2022. There's just too many questions out there. At least I have, I don't know if anybody else does. But I'd like to put that amendment in.
Hey, is there a second for that amendment?
I'll second it.
Hey. Simple tabling motion?
Postponing, not table, postpone, yeah.
Deputy Mayor, if the, just if the mover could speak to the wisdom of postponement?
Sure. I think I pretty much said that there's just so many questions here. I'm sorry, I just, and it sounds like there's no rush to it from what I'd asked earlier in my question, that there's no rush to get this done right now. With the questions that I have, and I don't know if anybody else does. If it's just myself, my apologies, but it just seems like we're, there's quite a few questions that are still floating around. But if that's, that's just myself. But again, just because there's no rush, and if there's no rush, why not put it to January 2022?
Counselor Parker?
Thank you. My question is, if that was the pass, what would the consequences be? Would there be any consequences? Mr. Kelly?
Well, if there's a postponement, then what will happen is that it continues to be operated as a department of the city. We'll continue with our agreement with Modalis as being a resource group with us. But the two triggers will not be in effect.
Hey, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I see none. Debate? Would you like to open, Counselor Higgin?
I pretty much said everything. Thank you.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
All right.
Mayor Spearman?
The Airport Committee has met for two to three years now. We've looked at, looked at the options and the recommendation from the committee is to move forward as suggested. So I see no purpose for a delay at this point, so.
Thank you, Counselor Morrow. Counselor Morrow, you're on mute.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I wasn't going to support the amendment either, even though I seconded it. I just wanted to put it up for discussion. But Mr. Kelly made a comment there where, if we don't do anything, everything stays the same except for the two triggers of 150,000 passengers or $500,000 profit. So if that's the only difference between today and postponing it, then I will support the postponement because come January, there should be more information available and maybe those trigger points need to be revised. Maybe they're not realistic or maybe they're not high enough. So for that reason, I will support the amendment to postpone.
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I won't be supporting the motion to postpone the work that's gone into this. And we do need to move forward. It was council's direction that we move forward on a continuum, moving towards a proposed commission or authority. This is the next step, to move us towards that, to get the Committee of Council out of the way and let the folks run the airport with the great advice from some of our consultants. We have kept council up to date on all this information. All this information that the committee has reviewed and decided on has been in front of council multiple times, regular updates. In fact, July, at our Standing Economic Committee, all of this was presented and discussed. So it shouldn't be a shock to everyone. This is the next logical step in moving toward council's goal of moving away from a Committee of Council, non-experts, running the airport. And so I don't support postponing it this time.
Is there any other debate? Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It was funny to hear previous colleagues say that they seconded it and weren't going to support it, but changed their mind. It was actually his debate that convinced me that I'm actually not going to support it. Because this is about governance. It is about oversight of a department as it currently exists and as is being proposed. And for me, I would prefer there be greater control oversight, council understanding that moving forward. So I would prefer to make the decision on that today. So I will, I will not support the motion for postponement.
Anyone else for debate? I see none. Counselor Higgin?
I think my previous two colleagues had made me go one way. No, I'm just kidding. No, I just, you know, I'm looking at some of the, and I don't want to say uncertainty, but of course, some of this federal funding that's just come available here, this 149 million, we can tap into about 20 million of it. We don't really know what's coming yet. And we would, but we will know that better in the next couple of months from what, you know, as this rolls out as being very within the last few weeks. So if there was no big change, as postponed as I'd heard earlier, that's why I thought it would be of importance to put it off and just have a better look at what we've got. Doesn't mean that it's the wrong thing to do. I think they've been a wonderful job. There's been some great, you know, recommendations. But for that reason, I just, at this time, there's just too many questions, so I just can't support it. Or I will support the amendment. Thank you. Almost got myself.
Are you sure? Okay. We'll call for the, we'll do a roll call.
Counselor Kaufman?
Opposed.
Counselor Higgin?
In favor.
Counselor Morrow?
Favor.
Counselor Parker?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Croson?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Opposed.
Mayor Spearman?
Opposed.
And Counselor Carlson?
Opposed.
That's two to six. That's lost.
So we go back to the original motion? Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to propose an amendment as per Mr. Kelly's response to Counselor Higgin, that the conditions of the key triggers of two consecutive years of $500,000 net operating profit and more than 150,000 annual passengers be included as the, as an operative clause, the next operative clause?
I'll second that.
I'll accept it as the mover.
I apologize for not being in writing.
Mr. Kelly?
I, just, sorry, if I'm speaking out of turn. I think the other thing that's causing confusion here is about the Management Services Contract. Because that's not part of the governance. This is just a consulting firm that's helping us out. So if that's causing confusion for City Council here as part of the resolution, maybe that, you may want to take that into consideration as being deleted as well.
I don't think my proposed amendment reflects or relates to that in any way, shape, or form. So thank you.
Questions on the amendment?
I think we're going to need some help with the wording of the amendment. Where can we find that? If someone could give us some information, that would be appreciated.
You want just the key triggers? Or key triggers and/or two years, whichever comes first, or something like that?
Now, the two years, I believe, are part of the key trigger. That it has to be two consecutive years?
No, no, I mean, like, you know, like after four years, like, you know, like to set a time and/or the triggers so that you have two options?
That's my next, that's my next one.
Okay, so we have the resolution as amended right now? Is that, is that what you're looking at, Counselor Kaufman?
Yes, I just need to complete that sentence. Are achieved? That, yes. Perfect, thank you. And I believe that's been accepted by the mover.
Okay.
I would like to propose one more amendment. Further be it resolved that this governance structure be reviewed every two years? Thank you, by Governance SPC. And I'm wondering if the mover would accept that as a friendly as well? Thank you.
So that is, so first off, there's questions. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Not on the new resold amendment, but on the previous one, that sentence makes no sense to me. So can somebody help me?
Questions on the triggers? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, if somebody can, the conditions of key triggers of two consecutive years are achieved? That doesn't make sense to me. But maybe it makes sense to everyone else? Like, I would say the conditions be included, not achieved. Like, I just don't know. Maybe it makes sense to everyone else. If that's fine, I'm good.
What about if these conditions of these two, of these two key triggers are achieved? Number one, two consecutive years of 500,000. And number two, net operating margin and whatever. Yeah, one and two.
So, sorry, what that sentence is not doing is saying, what are you going to do? So we hit the triggers, then what?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. That's what my brain is trying to wrap, et cetera.
So if it's the condition, the triggers of two consecutive years, the half million and $50,000, is that the governance model be reexamined by the SPC, the Governance SPC?
Thank you. That's my apologies. Thank you.
And, but there has to be a reexamined and.
I think the first paragraph is a little bit confusing because we're saying we're accepting the model until, so I think we have to separate receiving the reporters' information. We should say that first. But I think we already did in 4.1. And then, then we were accepting the proposed model until the triggers are achieved. Can we, do we need to have accept the reporters' information? Because we did that in 4.1.
You guys sure you don't want to postpone this, huh? You guys want to run, you guys want to run an airport and we can't even get a resolution fixed?
We're pretty close.
Was already fine.
We'll do questions after, correct, Mayor Spearman?
Yeah.
Okay.
Be resolved that we adopt the Option 1 with current management and contract services unchanged on, I would say, until the conditions of key triggers of the, are achieved. Until the key triggers of. How does that look? That looks good. I think that's the intention.
Okay, are we good with what's up there now?
Mover agrees, the amender agrees.
Okay, the amender? That's you, Counselor Kaufman? Counselor Carlson? Do you have a question?
I did have a second question on the further be it resolved. Right now, it's saying this will be reviewed by Governance. Standing Policy Committee, I believe, under our current structure, the Airport Committee, as it was, was under Economic, which allows all of council to provide the oversight. I'm wondering if the mover meant for Economic or did they want it to go to Governance?
I'll ask Counselor Croson. Governance model, do you want it Economic or do you want it in SPC?
This is Counselor Kaufman's. I was just suggesting, I think Governance tends to go to Governance, but either one would be sufficient as long as the other five are on Economic. Don't mind talking Governance.
Economic?
For consistency, since Economic would deal with every other aspect, it's probably wisest to go to Economic.
That's all nine members of council? Yeah, okay. I'll accept that as a friendly resolution.
We're being very friendly here. Counselor Higgin.
Right, so if, if this, if these margins, et cetera, these 500,000 and 150,000 are not met, can this be canceled, and is there a cost? Who could answer that for me?
City council can overturn this at any time, because that's their purr, purview. I said that right?
Purview? Sure. And there's no, and there's no, no, I mean, costs that we're not, we don't have somebody on for two years, that has to be paid out, et cetera, et cetera, this is just, it can be canceled at any time.
The management contract is different, there is a termination clause in the consulting contract that we have with Modallas, and if we don't need them anymore, then we trigger that.
Okay, but this, this here, this, it wouldn't matter here, because they could still stay on even if this doesn't?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, now are we, we're voting on the amendment, or the entire amendment, or the entire resolution?
We would be voting on all the amendments only.
Okay. That is by, that will be Counsel, Counselor Kaufman, or is that from the, from the mayor?
Well, I thought the amendments were all friendly, we just amended the resolution together, I agreed to the amendments.
Okay.
That's the case, then it's motion as amended?
Okay.
We don't have to vote on the amendments.
So we'll, we'll vote on the amendment, or we'll ask, first, are there any other questions on the amendment of the resolution?
I thought we were voting on the whole thing.
So there are no other questions? I'll open it up to Acting Mayor Croson.
No, I'm jumping to debate, I'm good for that.
Okay. Then I will open it up for debate. Mayor Spearman, do you want to close, or do you want?
I will, I'll start. We acquired the airport on July the 1st, 2018, so a little more than three years ago. And strengthening the airport's been a priority for this city council, through creation of the Airport Committee. This basically concludes the work, sets the direction for the future, and we know that the airport is going to be a vital economic development catalyst. It provides surety in further discussions with the airlines that we've committed. I think we've had tremendous success, attracting $24 million in external grants that I'm very sure would not have occurred if we hadn't take, you know, acquired ownership of the airport and, and applied for, for the grants. So I think this concludes the work, and hopefully council will support.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, or Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I get entirely the frustrations of my colleagues today. I think every question, every frustration, every concern you have expressed, I think I expressed very loudly at the Airport Committee meetings that we had, because this is not where we thought we were heading, especially not back in 2019. And I know if you looked through the packages when we were looking at governance models, it was much more the municipal corporation, the authority, the commission, that's where we were heading, that's where we wanted to go. We did not expect to have a pandemic in the middle of this, that affected air traffic this way, et cetera. So how I have had to wrap my head around this, think about when you are trying to sell a house. You do more work on the house when you're trying to sell it than you ever did when you were living in it yourself. Right, you fix things up, et cetera. We came into the airport with a $30 million infrastructure deficit. We came into the airport with no investments for decades since, you know, the 1990s, et cetera. And one of the things I know, and you guys know as well, we, even though we would like to live in the ideal world, we have to live in the real world, and we are going to have to step towards the governance model that we want. And this is, I think, the first step towards it. We need to get the, the non-airside work done, there's a lot of things that need to be done there. But we will get back to moving towards it. This is a bit of a hiccup, but this is, in my mind, the right direction. As I said, I have spent two years arguing this, discussing this, looking at this. It was a hard decision for me to come to, to be part of recommending this to council, but I think this is the right way to go, and I hope my colleagues will support this.
Thank you, Counselor Parker.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor, I too will be supporting it. I think Counselor Kaufman and Counselor Morrow were on council when we decided, when we were just looking at possibly buying this, and I think the crutch of the idea was, since we're giving them already $250,000 on an annual basis to operate, the logic is, why don't we just own it? And so the stars kind of came to line, and we had an opportunity to purchase. And was it strategic? Yes. Were we doing it to make money? No. And that was just a bonus, that did occur. As most people know, if that airport wasn't subsidized by the city of Lethbridge, it probably wouldn't be open today. And so we put our foot forward, we knew that it wasn't a, not a big economic driver, but it was key to our community in transporting people, specifically to Edmonton. And at that time, we had, what was it, who was the private carrier? Allegiant, thank you very much, and Allegiant was a key player, not Allegiant, rather.
Integra.
Integra, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Integra. And so that was a key player at the time, and there's been lots of ups and downs, Integra's closed down, we've lost Air Canada. But we are going to be resilient, and I'm glad that we've been able to leverage funds to help improve the asset that we now own. I think the key in the end of the day is going to be the development of the lands around it. That is the key, that is the key. We're going to make sure we have the essential service of transportation in regards to air transportation, but I don't know if that's going to be a big driver in regards to revenue. I think we're optimistic when we have these targets. But then the day, someone has to run the airport, and I'm glad we will be running the airport. Of course, this will always be a domestic airport, until we get a port of entry access of some sort, we really never will be able to get international travel, and I know that's always going to be a crutch. Since September 9/11, it's even that much more difficult. So I will be supporting, I'm optimistic, but I also know that this is a big picture, long-term plan, and I know 20 years from now, hopefully, or if not sooner, there'll be a huge amount of development with annexation occurring, and I think this is fitting, coming to the end of Mr. Kelly's tenure with the city, that we can kind of put a bow on the end of it. So thank you, Mr. Kelly, and thank you very much, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Counselor Kaufman.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, I too will support this, I, I think I share the sentiment of everybody. The Acting Mayor expressed it better than I ever will, about creating a new department. It's not what we're looking for in this organization. However, it's going to be under the oversight of the Director of Corporate Services, which brings me great deal of comfort, knowing that it's going to be stewarded with a great deal of passion, dedication, and oversight is probably the absolutely best word used there. The fact that we have the triggers in there gives me a bit more confidence now then as well, that this is not going to be in perpetuity. And the fact that it will be reviewed every two years at Economic Standing, Economic SPC, I think can help address some of the concerns of those not necessarily in favor of this, that if Economic SPC wants to change the terms, they are more than welcome at that time to pivot and provide something different. So we have some mechanisms in place where it's not just waving the magic wand and creating a department for the sake of a department. There are some very strategic and some very significant activities that are going to be undertaken to turn this airport into what it could be in the future, and certainly what I feel can occur, hopefully sooner rather than later, so I'll support the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Higgin.
Right, first of all, thank you to all my colleagues to getting through some of these questions and the answers and stuff that came, because it does give a little more comfort here, in hearing some of the, the responses, as well as some of these, these amendments that came forward, so thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for, for clarifying some of the concerns that I had. Understanding this is an economic driver, of course, it's, it's one of the most important things, we've talked about this for some time. It's, it's something that, you know, Lethbridge, this is going to get us to that next level. It seems that, you know, when you hit that 100,000, we hear all the time that that next, hitting another 50,000, another 100,000, as we, as we saw earlier, it doesn't take very long, once you get to that point, it seems that it really grows from there. So, you know, I do have, I, I'm, I've got comfort that there is, again, to, to change this, that through Economic Standing Policy Committee at that time, if there's something that needs to be done, and if it's not being, if it doesn't look like it's, it's, it's working for council at the time, there is a review. So that's, that is comforting as well, and so, and possibly we will be able to get Time Air back in, and so, that could be. That could happen, so with that, again, thank you for, for comments, and I will be supporting this.
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, and thanks for all the comments, I will be supporting the resolution. I won't repeat my colleagues', Mayor Spearman and Acting Mayor Croson's comments about the, the work the committee embarked on. I do understand that this isn't exactly where council wanted to be at this point, we wanted to be a little further ahead, but COVID did intervene. The silver lining, if you can even find one, is that during that time, council was able to make some key investments in the airport to position ourselves for even better outcomes in the future. So I think we have to remember that as well. I'd be remiss if I didn't just take a second to thank my colleagues on the committee, Acting Mayor Croson, Mayor Spearman, as well as Mr. Kelly and his team from Opportunity Lethbridge, the Airport Administration, and the Modallas for all the input and hard work and dedication they did. And that's not to mention, and I think I made the list, five city managers over the last couple of years have had a lot of work to do on this as well. So I'm in full support, and just want to add my thanks to those folks for their work, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carlson, I just want to, I add my support to the resolution, and again, to all of the work that the, the committee did, tremendous work, that was a lot of, a couple of years of banging heads together, making it right. Also want to thank Mr. Kelly and the great work that his staff has done, and also to, I'm just so impressed with Curtis Grad and his colleagues from Modallas, I almost said Moderna, but that's, that's a whole different story, we'll get, that'll be in the next resolution. But I, I thank you for that, and it just gives me, I think the vision that you're bringing to the, to the table also gives me excitement, and I know we've got a ways to go, but I think we're on the right course, so I will be supporting. Counselor Morrow.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Everybody's thanking everybody, and I guess I might as well do the same thing. And for one thing, I want to make sure that I don't come across as not appreciating the work over the last three years, and probably over the last, oh God, maybe 50, maybe back to 1995, when I first got elected. We've always seemed to have an Airport Committee, and both the county and everyone in the area always wanted the best for the airport. Over those years, the thing that I heard was, we need an airport, because we don't want to drive to Calgary, we don't want to drive to Great Falls, we don't want to drive, period. We want to drive to Lethbridge, go to the airport, hop on a plane, and go see the world. And that's been my vision right from day one. What I'm hearing more and more is that it's the land, the land, the land, we need to develop land, we need to develop land. Well, we can develop land anywhere, we've got an industrial park, we're doing quite well with that, we have lots of land there. So the land in my mind is, is a carrot being dangled. The airport has to survive because of people going in and out through those doors and flying. And so far, we haven't done a very good job of getting airlines to come to Lethbridge and stay to Lethbridge to fly. So that tells me something, that tells me that even though everybody here wants to fly out of Lethbridge, for some reason, they're not, and I'm going to guess that the reason they're not is because of the prices. And I know some of you that have been around back since 1995, understand why our prices are a lot higher than the prices in Great Falls and everywhere else. We all know that, I'm not going to get into that discussion. So what I'm hearing today, we are pumping a lot, we are, we bought this, we bought this three years ago, and as I said earlier, I bought it with the whole intention, or I was one of the nine that voted to buy the airport from the county, with the whole intention of trying to trigger tra, airline traffic. I want to drive to the airport, park my car, and go. I don't want to drive to Calgary or Great Falls, but we're being forced to do that for many reasons. So I don't, and I haven't heard anybody say anything favorably about that. So the last thing I want to do is have another city department. Again, I'm not slamming anybody from the city, or believing that city departments aren't doing their work, but I'm sorry, this is an airport, this is something that no one here knows anything about. And here we are now, you're making it sound like this is the best thing we can do, we've pumped in a lot of money, and I don't care if it's grant money from other levels of government, it comes from one pocket, and that's the taxpayer. And what I want to see is the taxpayer benefiting from this. I want to see airport, airplanes here, I want to see that the taxpayer is getting a return, and if they're not even getting a return, that at least they get to fly out of Lethbridge. I haven't heard that, I'm hearing everything else but that. Now we're going to continue on with this committee, and we're going to continue on, and we're going to hope we reach those triggers. So we reached those triggers for two years, and then we get another COVID virus. So the point I'm trying to make is, I'd rather go full steam ahead, because we're pumping a lot of money into it. We all believe it's a valuable asset and very important in our community and in Southern Alberta. But yet, in my mind, we're crawling, we're continuing with the same status quo until we magically hit those numbers. I'm saying, let's go straight for an authority, or some other method where we've got players that play in the game 24/7. Again, I'm not slighting anybody here, but we don't have anybody that's in the airline industry that plays in that game 24/7. That's who I want leading this team, and if it's going to cost us more money, I'm willing to put my hand up for that, because we need to get a return on this investment in our airport sooner rather than later. For those reasons, I'm not going to support the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman, do you want to close?
Well, I'd just like to remind council that we bought this airport for a dollar. And we have qualified for grants, we've made a business case that's been accepted by external government bodies. Some of those grants, we were 95 cents on the dollar. So the APAC grants, so I think we've done well, and I won't shy away from that. And I think this is an economic catalyst, we're in unusual times, but I'm optimistic that we'll come out of those unusual times, and business will return. I think the reputation of the city of Lethbridge, you know, having a viable airport adds to our reputation when we're looking at potential investors flying into our city, and saying, this is a modern city. Having, mid-sized cities are becoming very attractive places to, to work and to invest. And Lethbridge is well positioned, and having a viable airport will support that. Having that airport viable when we complete the Agri-Food Center will enhance the viability of the Agri-Food Center. And it's, it's an important component of our city going forward. We will attract greater passenger traffic. When I was in Moncton in Charlottetown, I said, we lose traffic to Calgary and we lose traffic to Great Falls. People get in their cars and go, and they said, we have exactly the same problem. So even though they have spectacular volumes, they lose people who drive directly to Halifax and fly out of there. So we, as we add more services, people will choose to fly out of Lethbridge. The day's not far away when it's going to be a hassle to drive to Calgary. And you have to put up with, you just have to miss a few flights because you got stuck in traffic, and you'll be flying out of Lethbridge in no time. So that, we have great opportunities, and I think this is a great step forward, and we need to make sure that we put ourselves on the right path. I agree, Lethbridge City Council does not have expertise in running airports, but we are contracting for those services and getting recommendations from people with years of experience, and having staffs full of people who have a variety of experience. So regardless of what the issue is facing our airport, they're likely to be able to have someone who has had past experience dealing with those issues. So I think maintaining the contracted service is wise for now, to give us advice, and we'd be smart to take that advice. So for those reasons, I'm, I'm saying we need to support the work of the committee and put ourselves on a path for the next two years that is going to set us in a position for future success. So I, I encourage my, my colleagues to support the resolution.
There's two of you.
I apologize for saying that twice.
The vote has been called, I'll ask Madam Clerk to tally the votes.
Thank you, Counselor Higgin.
In favor.
Counselor Morrow.
Opposed.
Counselor Parker.
Counselor Parker.
Favor.
Counselor, or Acting Mayor Croson.
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Uh, in favor.
Mayor Spearman.
In favor.
Counselor Carlson.
In favor.
Counselor Kaufman.
Favor.
Seven to one, that's carried.
Thank you. Okay, it's 3:55. We have a public hearing at four o'clock. I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute break before the public hearing.
We're now on to the public hearing phase. Bylaw 6296. I call to order the public hearing for bylaw 6296 Clean Energy Improvement Program. The procedure for this hearing will be, we will begin by calling upon Larry Laberty, Assessment and Taxation Manager, Steve Attoni, and Brendan Gray to provide the background to the case. Anyone else who wishes to speak on this bylaw will then be called upon. We will then ask three times if there is anybody else who wishes to make a presentation. City Council will then have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of second and third reading will be made by City Council immediately following the public hearing. I now call upon Mr. Larry Laberty to provide the background to the case. Mr. Laberty?
Thank you, Your Worship. We are here today to present bylaw 6296 to establish a Clean Energy Improvement Program in Lethbridge. I do have with me Brendan Gray and Stephanie Ripley from Alberta Municipal Services Corporation, who are their program administrators. The Clean Energy Improvement Program is an innovative financing mechanism allowing for low-interest loans to property owners to complete energy-efficient and renewable energy upgrades to their properties. The loan is tied directly to the property, facilitated through the property tax system, and operates much the same as a local improvement tax. Passing of bylaw 6296 would enable Lethbridge to build the correct model to deliver a Clean Energy Improvement Program, and would also establishing, also would establish borrowing limits for the program. Further, the bylaw will also trigger our funding application with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. The major advantage of borrowing through FCM is the inclusion of a $1.3 million grant that will cover setup costs, multi-year operating costs like administration, marketing, and promotion. The Clean Energy Program for Lethbridge will create jobs. It generates job opportunities for local energy efficiency and renewable energy contractors and professionals. It will provide a mechanism to support property owners to complete energy-saving and renewable energy upgrades on their property. It will support the city's efforts to reduce community greenhouse gas emissions, and it aligns directly with the city's energy conservation plan and strategy. A full market study and program overview document was attached in the presentation. A study outlines program requirements, participation projections, and job growth estimates. Also attached is a process funding flow chart and a copy of bylaw 6296. I'd like to turn the presentation over to Brendan now for a quick PowerPoint.
Thanks, Larry. Good afternoon, and thank you all for your time today to hear about Alberta's Clean Energy Improvement Program, also known as SEEP. My name is Brendan Gray, and I'm the Program Lead of Contractor Management for the program, and I'm joined by Residential Program Lead Stephanie Ripley. I know our time is short, so let's dive right in. Please move to the next slide. Next slide, please. Next slide. All right, one more slide, and we should be on the right one. Great. So what makes SEEP different? Well, there are a few things that differentiate SEEP from a loan from a traditional lender. First are competitive terms. Interest rates for financing clean energy improvements can be very low. This is because the municipality who is leading, sorry, who is lending the money to the participant can generally get a better interest rate on a loan or a line of credit when they capitalize the program than the average property owner, and they can pass that low interest rate on to the participant. Payment term lengths are flexible, and they reflect the useful life of products installed, and there's no penalty for early repayment of the Clean Energy Improvement charge by the participant. The program offers technical assistance from the AMSC on program details through the website and via customer support channels, and we make it easy to understand which upgrades are eligible. Energy evaluations are a requirement of residential programs and give property owners an idea of which installations will give them the most bang for their buck in terms of energy savings. The biggest difference between SEEP and a traditional loan is the loan transferability. The SEEP, sorry, the Clean Energy Improvement Charge or the SEEP charge stays with the property, as do the upgrades. This reduces the biggest barrier that property owners face when looking to install clean energy or renewable energy products. They're not stuck with a loan for products they're no longer using when they sell the property. Some additional notes: The borrowing made for financing clean energy improvements does not count against the debt limit or the debt service limit of the municipality, and municipalities can capitalize their program through a variety of sources, including traditional financial institutions like a local bank, or an organization like FCM, which I'll touch on shortly. Next slide, please. Next slide. Great, thank you. So what will the program look like? Well, using data from past energy efficiency programs and information from other SEEP-style programs, we've modeled uptake for a four-year residential program in Lethbridge. We expect the number of projects per year to increase year-over-year for a total of 182 projects at the end of year four, totaling roughly $3.6 million in project investment. This is the amount of capital required to offer financing for projects, or the amount of capital Lethbridge would have to secure to meet program demand as we've modeled. Next slide, please. So here are some figures of program outcomes. With $3.00 million in financing, we can expect $2.9 million in lifetime energy cost savings, $12 million of GDP added to the economy, 53 job years created, and 22,180 tons of CO2 equivalents in emission reductions. Next slide, please. Next slide. Great. As for securing the financing, FCM is offering a loan and grant through its Community Efficiency Financing Program to capitalize and kickstart a SEEP-style residential program. They are currently offering extremely low interest rates, some as low as 0%. Given current program modeling, the grant, which would cover the city's operating costs for the program, including incentives, marketing, AMSC administrative costs, IT and startup costs, could be as high as $1.3 million. All municipalities we are currently working with are pursuing this opportunity and considering the low interest rate and the generous grants and additional program support from FCM. It is a first-come, first-served program, and demand is high, with the number of municipalities already having submitted their applications. Rocky Mountain House, Devon, and Edmonton already secured funding through FCM. Next slide, please. Next slide. So this is all I have to present to you today. Thank you again for your time, and I hope this, I hope this presentation has been informative. Thanks.
Are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? For a second time, are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? For a third and final time, are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? I see none. So hearing no other presenters, it is now time for City Council to ask questions of the presenters. Do we have questions from members of City Council? No questions? Looks like a great program. Are there any downsides? I guess that's my question. What's, Mr. Laberty, what do you anticipate?
Through Your Worship, there doesn't seem to be any downside to this. It's all positive news. The loan is secured by the property, so there's no risk to the municipality. It is a good program.
And Mr. Matthews, you agree?
I agree as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Campbell?
I guess just the question, when, when can people start applying, or when can it get going? Or is it right away?
Well, right now, we're developing the program. Well, if this is passed, we will be developing the program. That will take some time, and the funding application also will require several months. In fact, the funding application times could be, you know, a year even before we get fin- final approval for, for funding. So we don't want to go too far before we, we have security in place. So probably next year, if, just in a nutshell, probably fall of next year.
But there's no disadvantage, you were saying, other municipalities have already submitted their requests? So is that going to be a problem for Southern Albertans in Lethbridge?
Brendan, you want to take that one?
Sure, I can take that one. Thanks, Larry. So we do have three municipalities that are looking to launch in late summer. That doesn't pose, I guess, a threat, for lack of a better word, for Lethbridge securing, financing, and funding through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. They've actually secured their funding through an earlier round of applications, and so Lethbridge would be submitting on a separate round and competing with a different set of municipalities.
Great. Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spearman.
Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mr. Spearman. And Mr. Laberty, does assessment, is assessment affected by renewable resources being attached to the property? Is there a benefit, an assessment benefit, or an assessment consequence to that, negative impact to that?
Well, as far as assessment goes, we, it's based on market value. So if there's an increase in the market value of the property due to upgrades, say that they put brand-new windows, that was the upgrade, there would probably be some type of an offsetting increase in assessment as well, because it's, it's now worth more.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spearman.
Any other questions from Council? Hey, I see none.
Yes.
Counselor Morrow?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So who actually does, who borrows the money?
The property owner is the ultimate borrower of the, of the money.
So we, as the city, are not at any risk or on the hook at all?
Yeah, we, we borrow the original capital to, to, to do the program, but then it's loaned, like, the property owner is responsible for repayment, and it's tied directly to their property, so there's not a lot of risk, no.
So the city will borrow the money, I'm going to borrow from the city, I'm going to make my home energy efficient, I'm going to be paying monthly payments, or is it in my taxes, or how would the individual end up paying for these environmental improvements?
They are paid through the property tax system, based on the lifetime of the upgrade. So if it's a 10-year, 10-year lifespan, we might, maybe repaying that loan over 10 years.
And I thought I heard you say, so I want to sell my house, I got old windows, old furnace, I'm gonna, I'm gonna borrow it, I'm gonna fix it up, and I'm gonna sell it, and I'm successful, and I sell it in a month, whoever buys my house is now on the hook for, for the, for the, for the loan. Correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, if there's no other questions, hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this afternoon, following the public hearing. We'll now move on to bylaw 6297. I call the, to order the public hearing for bylaw 6297 Land Use Amendment re 3105 44th Street South, 4310 24th Avenue South, Southbrook Phase 2. The procedure for this hearing will be, we will begin by calling upon Tyson Boylan, Senior Community Planner, to provide the background to the case. Anyone else who wishes to speak on this bylaw will then be called upon. We will then ask three times if there is anybody else who wishes to make a presentation. City Council will then have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of second and third reading may be made by City Council immediately following the public hearing. I now call upon Mr. Tyson Boylan to provide the background to the case. Mr. Boylan?
Thank you, Your Worship and members of Council. This is bylaw 6297. It's a proposed land use amendment to Southbrook Phase 2. Next slide, please. Oops, we didn't even start yet. There it is. There's the first slide. Thank you. So my presentation today will cover the relevant, relevant information regarding the land use file amendment. It will give an evaluation of the proposed amendment, and will finish up with our department's recommendation to City Council. Next slide, please. And the applicant is Brown Okamira and Associates on behalf of the developer, Southbrook, and their consultant is also here today and is available to answer questions after I'm done. The applicant would like to rezone an area to RCL to allow for single-detached dwellings on smaller parcel sizes than what is currently permitted under the existing RL land use district. Next slide, please. So the, the amendment area is in approximately the southeast corner of development in the city, shown as a red star above here. Next slide. And the proposed amendment is, is outlined with a green hatch area on this more detailed map. It is located in the middle of the Discovery Neighborhood, in the area that's more commonly known as Southbrook, immediately to the east of Fairmont. Next slide, please. And here's a look at the amendment area outlined in green on the 2019 air photo. It is located to the south of ongoing development in Southbrook, and is located just east of the existing Gateway Muse area of Fairmont. Next slide. So here's a photo on the ground, and this is taken looking southwest across the site at 31st Avenue South. As you can see, the site is undeveloped at this time, but utilities are currently being installed here. And in the background is the adjacent Gateway Muse area. Next slide, please. So here are the relevant planning documents to this proposed rezoning, and this demonstrates the planning work that has been done to date for the neighborhood, and shows how neighborhood plans need to comply with the overarching planning documents. Next slide, please. And here's the ASP concept map from the 2016 Southeast ASP, which displays a general neighborhood layout and land uses. The red circle corresponds to the amendment area, which was intended for residential development in this plan. Next slide, please. And the land use concept map for the Discovery Outline Plan is displayed above, and is more detailed than the ASP is. The red outline once again corresponds to the amendment area, and it consists of low-density residential, which is shown as yellow here. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the existing land use on the left and the proposed land use on the right, just to compare them side by side. The existing RL district can be used for single-detached homes, secondary suites, and duplexes, but requires a minimum lot with 13 meters for laneless lots. The developer desires narrow lots in this area to construct single-detached dwellings, so they are proposing the RCL land use district, which allows for this, and does not allow for duplexes or for secondary suites. Next slide, please. So for evaluation and analysis, the application fulfills the policies of the regional plan and the MDP in regards to increased density compared to existing areas and offering affordable housing types. And next slide. In terms of the governing ASP and outline plan, the proposed amendment is, is in compliance with the land uses and lot, and lot sizes that are intended by these plans, and the developer also work with city staff to ensure that the proposed development sites met previous plans, and the intended development could be accommodated here. Next slide, please. So for notification, mails were sent out to 18 owners of the parcels shown on the green hatch areas above, and ads also appeared on the Herald and on the city's website. And I received questions and comments from three nearby landowners, and I provided them with further information on the ongoing development in the area and how they could participate into this public hearing. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, bylaw 6297 is compliant with all existing statutory and approved plans for the area. Next slide. And it is our recommendation that City Council approve bylaw 6297. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boylan. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? For a second time, are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? For a third and final time, are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing no other presenters, it is now time for City Council to ask questions of the presenters. Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mr. Spearman. Thank you, Mr. Boylan, for the presentation, the information. I know that there's no minimum width of lot in RCL, but doing sort of the linear math, are they going to be approximately 11 meters in width?
I believe so. I will let the applicant, who's representing the developer, to answer these sizes for the lots.
Is the applicant online?
I believe they are. I believe it's Adam, it's Adam McDonald and Bill Delaney from Associated Engineering.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Sure. Yeah, the intention is the, the frontages would be 11 meters.
Thank you. And, Mr. Boylan, we received no feedback from Fairmont Gate, any residents in Fairmont Gate?
From American, not from Fairmont Gate, or in Gateway Muse.
Gateway Muse, sorry, thank you, yeah.
Gateway Muse, yeah, there, there was three individuals from Gateway Muse. Two of them wanted further information. One of them expressed concern about, about increasing density in the area. And I provided them further information on how to, how to speak at the public hearing, but I have not heard anything back. I'm not sure if they are aware to, that the existing RL district allowed for, for a little bit denser housing types, like duplexes or secondary suites as well, too, whereas the RCL district only allows for single-detached dwellings.
Thank you. Do you know, just off the top, Mr. Boylan, if the muse is RL? I believe that, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I believe it is. If I can go just, just to my presentation, I can, I can look at that. Yes, it is. If you look on slide, slide 11 of the presentation, it shows the surrounding land use districts in the area.
Oh, there it is. Sorry, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spearman.
Are there any other questions from Council? Okay, if there's no other questions from Council, hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this afternoon, following the public hearing. We'll now move on to public, the public hearing for bylaw 6298. I call to order the public hearing for bylaw 6298 Land Use Bylaw Amendment re 4302 24th Avenue South, 4310 24th Avenue South, Southbrook Phases 5 and 6. The procedure for this hearing will be, we will call upon Mr. Tyson Boylan, Senior Community Planner, to provide the background to the case. Anyone else who wishes to speak on this bylaw will then be called upon. We will then ask three times if there is anybody else who wishes to make a presentation. City Council will then have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of second and third reading will be made by City Council immediately following the public hearing. I now call upon Mr. Boylan to provide the background to the case.
Thank you, Your Worship and members of Council, once again. This is bylaw 6298. It's a proposed land use file amendment to another phase of Southbrook, and this time it's in phases 5 and 6. Next slide, please. So my presentation will follow the same format as the one that we just heard. Next slide. Once again, the applicant is Brown Okamira and Associates on behalf of the developer, Southbrook, and their consultant is available to answer questions after I'm done. And they are proposing to rezone an area to RM and to RCL to allow for the potential development of single-detached homes, duplexes, and secondary suites here. Next slide, please. So the amendment area, once again, is approximately the southeast corner of development in the city. And next slide. The proposed amendment area is outlined in green here, although it's further north than the application that we just heard. It is located in the northwest corner of Discovery Neighborhood and is just south of 24th Avenue South. Next slide, please. So here's a look at the amendment area, outlined in green on the 2019 air photo. And the amendment area is currently undeveloped, but it is between the developing areas of Southbrook to the east and to the south, and also the developed neighborhood of Fairmont just to the west. And next slide. And here's a photo looking, or taken looking on the ground, and it's looking northwest across the site from 44th Street this time, towards Fairmont, which is in the far background here. And as you can see, the site is graded, but it's currently undeveloped right now. Next slide, please. So here are the relevant planning documents to this rezoning, and they are the same as the last presentation. And next slide. So here's the concept map for the, for the Southeast ASP. Once again, the amendment area was intended for residential development in this plan. And next slide. And the land use concept map for the Discovery Outline Plan is displayed above here. And again, the amendment area consists of low-density residential, which is shown as yellow here. And next slide. So on the existing, or, on the slide, the existing land use is, is on the left, and the proposed land use is on the right. The proposed land use districts would allow the developer the next phase of development in the area, utilizing some of the same land use districts that have been used in previous phases of Southbrook. The proposed RCL district, shown as yellow here, will be used to construct single-detached homes. The proposed RM district allows for single-detached homes, secondary suites, single-detached homes, duplexes, and townhouses, but in this case, the developer wants to use it to construct secondary suites on the individual parcels with lane access, and also duplexes on the larger RM site, which is in the southern portion of this amendment area. Next slide, please. So the application fulfills the policies of the regional plan and the MDP. And next slide. In terms of the, in terms of the governing ASP and outline plan, the proposed amendment is in compliance with the land uses that are shown in these funds, and it will also help to achieve the ASP's target of having 30% of low-density residential parcels and having a secondary suite within this neighborhood. The application was circulated to city staff, who confirmed that the intended development could be accommodated here as well. And next slide. Mailouts were sent out to the 68 owners of the parcel shown on the green hatch areas that are shown above, and ads also appeared on the Herald and on the city's website. And that's, and I received questions and comments from two nearby landowners, and I provided them with further information on the proposed land uses. Next slide. So in conclusion, bylaw 6298 is compliant with all existing statutory and approved plans for the area. Next slide. And it is our recommendation that City Council approve this bylaw. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boylan. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? For a second time, are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? For a third and final time, are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing no other presenters, it's now time for City Council to ask questions of Mr. Boylan. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Boylan? I see none. Hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this afternoon, following the public hearing. We'll now take a short break to switch to the technology. We'll now take a short break to switch the technology. Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to 5.2. Okay, Lethbridge Housing Authority, moved by councillor Higgin. And the motion isn't spelled out, so... Be it resolved that City Council...
I think it's left open, your worship. Any councillor can put forward whatever motion that they want to.
Sir Higgin, do you have a motion for 5.2?
Sorry, I was just working on that. I didn't realize that it came in this way here when I was reading, and I thought, okay. So I'm just, I was working on that. If you just, if it's two minutes here, if I can just finish up. Sorry, I just had to get the funding source here from our acting city treasurer. Mayor Spearmun, if we can put this, ask for request to have this to the end of the meeting here. If there's, I believe we have a couple of other things to go through here, if that's possible. So we don't have to, yeah, table it still to this meeting, sorry.
Okay. There's no objection from council, I'll just accept that. And we'll just reorder the agenda, so we'll come back to 5.2. If we can move back, move on now to 5.3. I don't have a mover. Yeah, disc golf course. Okay, Penequem Disc Golf Course Follow-up. Be it resolved that council receive the presentation as information, moved by councillor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and of course, members of council. I think this was asked, I don't know if it was the last meeting, I think it was actually a meeting of a month ago, to come back. And I do believe Mr. Ellis is online to answer any questions as provided, if needed, in the report here. Is there any questions, first of all, from members of council?
Are there any questions from members of council? Councillor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearmun. Guess to Mr. Hawkins. So this is a follow-up, answering our questions, thank you very much. What has been proposed, what was discussed at that meeting, is still going ahead.
To councillor Kaufman.
Kaufman, yeah. It's been a while, it's good to see you, too.
The, that's correct. We are still proceeding. Again, this was intended to just be a more fulsome explanation of what we've been doing with the Disc Golf Club, to the extent that we're engaging with some of the concerned citizens around the proposal. But the plan is to still move ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Spearmun.
Any further questions from council? Is there any further work to be done to reconcile the competing interests of people that use the dog, the off-leash dog park, and the people proposing to develop the Disc Golf Course?
There's nothing outstanding in terms of current engagement, but during, we have heard those concerns expressed by the dog leash folks, or off-leash dog area users. And a fence is included in this proposal and is funded from operations. And it would be our intention to provide regular updates as the project gets developed, so that the users of the existing dog leash, off-leash area are aware of what's going on.
And it's the view of administration that the side-by-side uses are compatible?
I think with the way the design is going in terms of where these, the disc fairways are in relation to the actual dog leash area, there is a buffer and a fence, so there is a fairly significant separation between the uses. And it's our opinion that that will alleviate any conflicts that might arise.
Thank you. Councillor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearmun. Just two things on that. First, I know that the acting mayor had a, I think it was an inquiry, and about volunteers in parks. And I'm just wondering if there's been any conversation with the Disc Golf Association about supporting in terms of care, maintenance of the property that may provide an operational saving to the organization?
We are having those discussions with the club itself, absolutely, yep.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not certain of Mr. Ellis's response when this was asked, but I know that this wasn't something that council had actually necessarily had a heads up on. So when I see the expenditure coming from Parks' operation of $83,000 for the sign and basket parking lot and fence, the question I ask is, what are we not doing then? If we had $80,000, $83,000, we've reallocated it to this, what are we not doing?
So the short answer is, this isn't preventing anything from going ahead. The primary funding source is for these kinds of community upgrades and/or a contribution we do, we make with developers as they build new parks as well. Depending on the extent to which we've agreed on a design, and there is a cost share associated with some of those future amenities in those new park areas. So this expense is not preventing anything based on our current time, or our current understanding of new park development in new neighborhoods and/or any other community groups that we're currently working with. And it definitely does not impact, the obvious question is, is it impacting our ability to do maintenance? These are, this money was never earmarked for maintenance activities like weed control or those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you. And this is to the end of the current budget, so to the end of 2022?
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Spearmun.
Any further questions from council? I see none. So this is a submission, and from councillor Parker, be it resolved that council receive the presentation and report as information? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We'll now move on to official business. There was an urgent item that was added to the agenda. It's a matter, I'm proposing it, it's, I'll ask councillor, or deputy mayor, to read it, that we second a AUMA motion?
I have a resolution from Mayor Spearmun, whereas the city of Grand Prairie has requested the city of Lethbridge second the following resolution for the 2021 Alberta Urban Municipalities Association Annual General Meeting, whereas some municipalities serve as regional service center hubs for commerce, recreation, health care, social services, and provincial amenities. Whereas there are unique challenges that are disproportionately faced by regional centers, whereas these unique challenges result in a disproportionate tax burden being placed on residents of these communities. Whereas the Alberta government previously recognized the importance of regional centers through the metropolitan funding component of the Alberta Community Partnership Grant, it is therefore resolved that the AUMA advocate for a dedicated funding stream for municipalities who serve as regional service centers. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Lethbridge second the city of Grand Prairie's proposed 2021 AUMA resolution requesting for a dedicated funding stream for municipalities who serve as a regional service center. Mayor Spearmun?
Thank you very much. You also see the background, so the city of Grand Prairie has asked if we would second this resolution. They see that we face some of the same issues that they face in terms of higher crime rates, additional social service burdens, things where people come into a regional center looking for services and asking that as we provide services to the region, and not all mid-sized cities are regional centers, but Grand Prairie and Lethbridge are, they've asked if we would second their resolution going forward. So I said I would bring it to council for consideration today.
We have questions? No questions. Debate?
I'd ask council to support this. I think it's a no-lose situation in the sense that if we have the AUMA advocating for this and funny, money does come our way in the future, that would be terrific.
Okay. I imagine that's your close, I guess we'll vote on it. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to bylaws. Procedure bylaw, bylaw 6250, moved by councillor Kaufman for second reading. Be it resolved that bylaw 6250, procedure bylaw, be given second reading. Councillor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearmun. Well, as Chair of Governance Committee, it gives me great pleasure to introduce this. I'd like to ask acting mayor Croson to actually introduce it, as she chaired the subcommittee of self and me, I.
Yeah, small subcommittee of councillor Kaufman and myself, who have been working on this for about three years with the help of the city clerks department, starting with Alita Neufeld, but Ms. Bonnie Hilfer, David Sarsfield, Ryan Westerson, amazing support, and the city solicitors office, Brian Lowen and Sherry Shigahiro. This has been a lot of work to go through. And the current bylaw, which we have, or the procedure bylaw, which we're actively using today, when I first read through it, it actually had a mistake in it that said councillors who spoke could not be on topic, and I think we've achieved that many times, but that has since been amended. But that was some of the mistakes that were in there, and it was hard to find things, and there were difficulties. And so we took on the task of developing a new procedure bylaw. And when you look at it, look at number four. "The rules contained in this bylaw must be used to facilitate progress and must be applied in the spirit of fairness, equality, and common sense." That was our guiding principle as we were developing this. We wanted something that would be useful, that would be a guide. If you were new on council, or if there was a discussion about how something should proceed, you'd have something that you could look at. So we've actually combined a few things, which is why you'll also see that we're getting rid of one, a certain policy, et cetera, because everything has been combined in here. And the balance we were trying to find is how to balance actually making things move along without having tyranny of the majority, so that if there's somebody who has a concern or an opinion, that, you know, the majority isn't using the bylaw, or the procedure bylaw, as a hammer to silence that person. And that's why we wanted to make sure that this is in here. This is about making sure council meetings, all of our committee meetings, et cetera, work in a way that is effective. And so this is a long bylaw, but as you go through, there are various areas where you can quickly look it up as a reference. And so thank you again to everyone who's worked on this. This has been... so, thank you again to everyone who's worked on this. This has been fascinating to go through because we have actually, when things have happened in council, we've gone back through this and tried to make changes to it so that it best reflects best practice, but also has a way of actually supporting what we do on a day-to-day basis. So, it's before you now for second reading, and I'm hoping that my colleagues will support it.
Are there any questions from council? I see none. Debate?
Mayor Spearmint?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't get my hand raised in time. I put an amendment in. I believe Ms. Hilfer has it.
Okay, I just received your amendment. Moved by Counselor Carlson, yeah. Okay, I'm just trying to find the names on the page. I'm struggling to read, sorry. That bylaw 6250 be amended by deleting section 194B, sub-I, the approval of the consent agenda, and renumbering section 194B2, or double I's, to 194B1. Do you have a seconder? Oh, doesn't have to have a seconder. Okay. Okay, Counselor Carlson, can you explain your amendment?
Thanks, Mayor Spearmint. Just something for council to consider. Currently, if we accept the procedure bylaw as presented, the consent agenda requires unanimous support. Just over the last several months, that would never be achieved, and so this removes the requirement for the consent agenda to be unanimous. It still allows for any member of council, if they wish to debate something or vote against something, to pull it off of the consent agenda. But this means that i-if they don't choose to do that, we don't require unanimous consent.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the amendment? Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Just to those that created the amendment or created this policy, are you, are you good with that? Since you, you went, you went through it all, I just want to, want to know if you concur.
I would be voting against the amendment. I know where Counselor Carlson is coming from, but the reason it's in there is precisely what we have been seeing. If somebody has a concern with something on the consent agenda, then it should be pulled out and brought into the submission and discussed. So, that's, that's why it's in there. I appreciate that, how Counselor Carlson has said it, that somebody could pull it anyways, but this is sort of a fail stop, so that, you know, if you have any concern, it's just debate it. You do run the risk, remember, everything has a risk and a reward. If it's unanimous, you may be lengthening meetings a long time, because, you know, every first reading of a bylaw could then be done, like, it could be, you could get a lot more work than you think, but I think that it, this is deliberately there as a balance. So, I would be voting against the amendment, but I, I certainly see the other perspective, which is why it took three years to get here.
Right. And the second one, it just sort of looks like it's kind of housekeeping?
Which one are you talking about?
The second, the second amendment?
Oh, that's just changing the number.
Okay.
So, that there's three readings of a bylaw at the same meeting. We don't have any choice in that. That has to be unanimous.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions on the amendment? I see none. Are you ready to, okay, debate on the amendment?
Thanks, Mayor Spearmint. Just to reiterate, I do understand the, the thought behind unanimity. However, I believe it could be rather clunky and utilized in the opposite manner that I believe the committee that built the bylaw was intending. So, I'd ask for council support.
Okay. Any further debate? I see none. I'll take that as your opening and your close?
Yep, I'll call for the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor of the amendment? I see none.
Carlson? I didn't have my video on. You didn't see my hand here.
One in favor, seven opposed? Okay. The amendment's defeated. We'll go back to the original motion. Any questions on the original motion? The motion for second reading? Any debate?
I had one question, Your Worship.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Perhaps the Acting Mayor Carlson and, and Counselor Kaufman can remind me, because I don't have it open now in front of me. What is the process? Because I don't recall that it was actually outlined in the procedure bylaw, but should a circumstance happen today, because it says councillors may not vote against the consent agenda, they must pull an item. If a councillor doesn't and votes against it, what is the process? Is that outlined in the procedure bylaw?
Thank you, Counselor Carlson. Yes, it's section 123. "If a member wishes to debate an item included in the consent agenda or vote against it, the member may request the item be removed from the consent agenda before voting occurs on the consent agenda motion, and the item will be considered as a separate item in the appropriate section of the agenda." So, with today's, with today's example, if Counselor Higgin doesn't mind me mentioning his name, too late, what we would have done is we would have pulled each and every one of those bylaws out, and under bylaws today, we would have gone through each of them individually.
Okay, so that is the process, so that if, if somebody does vote against, it just automatically, because that's not actually said, it says a member must pull out, but if a member doesn't and votes against the consent agenda, should there not be some language in there saying if that happens, the entire consent agenda is put on the regular agenda? I think there was some trust given that people would do that, but I, I haven't been seeing that happening, so I'm just wondering if, if we should have some language that says if it is not unanimous, all items are placed on the regular agenda.
I have a hard time believing that three years of committees, we would have missed that loophole. Mr. Sarsfield, is that, yeah, if, well, I'm not in charge of the meeting, but I say sure, come on up.
Go ahead. Please provide clarification, Mr. Sarsfield.
We'll, we'll try. So, a lot of the bylaw was developed under certain premises, and part of the premise was that treat everybody with respect and understanding. So, even though every single typical condition or clause has not been dealt within the bylaw, it is a matter of education, understanding on how it's going to work. So, as part of the process, when it comes to effect in November, what we would do is provide an education, this is how we would conduct something. So, maybe the first instance, at the first meeting, someone does vote against the consent agenda, that would be an educational opportunity to say this is what the bylaw says and what we should do. In the current bylaw, there is no provision, and for the consent agenda, it doesn't matter if it is passed unanimously, so this is a new provision, and we require a new education to whoever the council consists of.
I can add to that, Counselor Carlson, if you're okay. You know, the consent agenda includes everything from first readings of bylaws, which traditionally, under Westminster parliamentary process, we don't debate, because everything should be introduced for the purpose of debate, but it also includes the minutes, it includes the, the monthly summaries on various things. So, really, if a member is trying to demonstrate some form of protest about the consent agenda, really, under section 123, needs to be identified. You have to have an issue with something specific, and then you request that be pulled out. So, the process for today would have been all of those bylaws get pulled out and get dealt with on a one-by-one basis. So, hearing Mr. Sarsfield's explanation, the fact that this is new, and it is a, an educational opportunity for the next council, and, and on and on, I think that I don't see the necessity of putting something in there. I understand and recognize what it is that you're saying, though.
As long as we have, or next council has an understanding of the process, even though it's not spelled out, that's fine, I guess.
Okay. Any other questions on second, on second reading of the procedure bylaw? I see none. We'll move on to debate. Who would like to open?
Yeah, we can take mine as opening.
Are you open? Any further comments by councillors? Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Just nice work. That's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of teamwork to come up with the policy, so I just congratulate you, and we'll be supporting the resolution.
You? Any further debate by councillors? I see none. Who would like to close?
Thank you, Mayor Spearmint. Thank you to my colleagues for this. Yes, to echo the words of the acting mayor, thank you to the clerk. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Lowen and Ms. Shigahiro in Legal for their oversight as well, and ensuring the consistency of, of the things that we changed, and then re-changed, and then changed again, just to make sure that everything was actually in line. You can rest assured that Counselor Carlson and I really did go through this word by word. We entered into many semantic discussions and took the opportunity of, of sort of using council meetings as live fire. Over the last three years, there were a number of issues that arose that we would text back and forth or email, oh, we need to address this in the procedure bylaw. So, we appreciate all of the challenges you threw at us this year as well. These are the rules of engagement. These are the rules about how we are going to fulfill our responsibilities here at council. As Acting Mayor identified, everything is now in, in one document, which makes it an awful lot easier. It's much more intuitive as well in terms of, of flow and follow-through, and the language is much clearer than, than the previous bylaw was as well. This is a real step ahead for this organization, and hopefully, the next council appreciates the work that's been done, and they can use it to their advantage and to ensure that good governance is actually fulfilled here at council. With that, I'll call the question on second reading.
Question has been called. All in favor? Are any opposed? That is unanimous. Congratulations. Oh, third reading. Why not? Okay. And for third reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6250, procedure bylaw, as amended, be given third reading, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign this and seal the same? Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? There are none. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to bylaw 6296, the Clean Energy Improvement Bylaw, moved by Counselor Carlson for second reading. Be it resolved that bylaw 6296, Clean Energy Improvement Bylaw, be given second reading. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearmint. Of course, we heard all about this during the public hearing. For so many Lethbridge residents, our homes are our largest investment. They're also one of the places where we can dramatically affect greenhouse gases and, and help save energy. And this program will help residents in Lethbridge do that. It'll also help generate jobs and support the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions in our community. And I will hope, I hope my colleagues will support this, because this is a program that will be very effective for Lethbridge.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? I see none. Move on to debate. We've heard in the opening. Any debate? I see none. And the close?
Call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Are any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. And for third reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6296, the Clean Energy Improvement Bylaw, be given third reading, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same?
Question?
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? There are none. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to bylaw 6297, Land Use Amendment, read 3105 44th Street South and 4310 24th Avenue South, South Brook Phase Two. Who would like to move this resolution? Deputy Mayor Campbell? Be it resolved that bylaw 6297, Land Use Amendment, read 3105 44th Street South, 4310 24th Avenue South, South Brook Phase Two, be given second reading, from Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Heard the, uh, the presentation earlier today. It's, uh, it's an amendment to rezoning to utilize the minimum amount of land necessary for new development and build at a higher density than current practice. Seems to be no objection to it. Unless there's anything further, I would ask my colleagues to support the bylaw.
Are there any questions? I see none. Any debate? I see none.
Call a question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? There are none. And for third reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6297, Land Use Amendment, read 3105 44th Street South and 4310 24th Avenue South, South Brook Phase Two, be given third reading, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same?
Question?
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? There are none. Thank you. And now, we have bylaw 6298. Does anyone want to move this bylaw? Deputy Mayor Campbell again. Bylaw 6298, be it resolved that bylaw 6298, Land Use Amendment, read 4302 24th Street South and 4310 24th Avenue South, South Brook Phase Five and Six, be given second reading. Deputy Mayor Campbell?
This rezoning helps promote affordable housing by encouraging and facilitating, facilitating the adequate supply of housing for all income groups, and I support the rezoning, and I ask my colleagues to do the same.
Are there any questions from council? Counselor Higgin?
Just a minor one, just for a typo there. I don't know if it really makes a difference, but South, South Brook is probably South Brook, and again, I'm not sure if that really makes, if that can be changed later, but you might just want to change that on both.
Second and third. Yeah. Okay. We'll, we'll make that, that change unless anyone objects. Any other questions? I see none. Any debate? I see none.
Call a question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? There's none. For third reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6298, Land Use Bylaw Amendment, read 4302 24th Street South, 4310 24th Avenue South, South Brook Phases Five and Six, be given third reading, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same? Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Call a question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? There are none. Thank you. Okay. We're at inquiries. Counselor Higgin had an inquiry, and there is an inquiry and a response, read Grasshoppers. Anything further on that? Counselor Higgin?
I think we've got the update here just high level, and I, I don't know if there's anything more that Mr. Hawkins has to share or anybody else, but I think we are provided the information. I, I think this is the current status of, of what we're monitoring. I, I think the, the message to the community currently is that nothing, nothing directly will impact the situation this year, but we are looking at control measures that we might engage in, subject to council approval, to deal with next year's problem. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. That's good.
Thank you. Next inquiry was from Counselor Carlson, an inquiry- Next inquiry was from councillor Croson, an inquiry regarding Foxtail. The question and the response are included with the agenda. Councillor Croson, anything further?
Thank you for the information. I know it's something that the public has been asking about, and fortunately, the Foxtail issues, there is ways we can deal with it, though it will take us some time, so thank you.
Thank you. And next, another inquiry from councillor Croson regarding Adopt a Park Program. Councillor Croson?
Again, thank you for this. I know there are quite a few people in the public who are informally doing a lot of volunteering out in the parks. This is information on, if people want to do it in a more formal way, they can certainly have a look at this. There's a lot of different things that the community can get involved with, and there are certainly a lot of groups that are doing that work. So the information is there. I know I had a member of the public ask me about this, and this is now a great place to send them all-in-one information, so thank you.
Mr Mayor, if I could, the one thing that's not explicit here is that, to the extent that we have this program, and there is a certain amount of take-up on it, we haven't been actively promoting it in the last couple of years, and I think, just given the restraint that we have and the issues that we're confronting in terms of drought and those kinds of things, we're looking at, we're planning on being more proactive in terms of promotion and volunteer oversight next year, to see if we can't get greater take-up and encourage the community to do exactly what the program is intended to do, is to get engaged with their neighbourhood parks, to help, you know, provide a level of service that maybe we operationally aren't in a position to do or can't be as timely. So just a note for next year's program is that we will be a little more proactive in terms of marketing and oversight.
Any... Everybody's happy with that? Okay, council updates. Our AUMA resolution was submitted to AUMA. They did send it back for a few tweaks, so there were a couple of bullets added, but the intent and direction of the resolution remains unchanged, and this is the updated resolution, just to keep council up to date. And the other update, AUMA resolution, re-advocacy of National Early Learning and Care Program. Councillor Croson?
Yes, similar to yours, we were asked to provide more background information, so the resolution itself is the same. It's the background information. AUMA asked us to give a better indication of how this affects municipalities and a better indication of the status of this in Alberta. Of course, this has changed since we, since we as council first looked at this, so the background has been rewritten. Thank you to Carleen in our office who helped to rewrite some of that, and so the information is there, which will hopefully provide everyone at AUMA a better understanding of this topic. So that is what is being provided in the update.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we ready to go back to 5.2? Okay? All right.
Thank you, Mayor Speerman. 5.2, if I could ask to have that postponed till August 24th.
Okay. So request from councillor, do we have to have a motion to postpone? Okay, so we'll take that as a motion. Is there a second for that motion? Councillor Croson? Okay, all in favour of postponement? Any opposed? Okay. Good. Okay, I think we have to go back into in camera. Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to go in camera, please? From Deputy Mayor Campbell? All in favour?